Good morning.
Okay.
Hi, Rain. What?
All right, at seven thirty, we're gonna call this meeting to order. Let's believe those. Let's leave just. United States of America. And during the. Undergo. Good morning. Please.
Yes. Thea.
Here.
Brad. Here, Calvin and yes, Robo.
Here.
Oh, sorry.
Yes.
Here, Milton.
Yes. All right, does anybody have any? Agenda that like to propose?
I have some questions.
Yeah.
Um, well, Kevin. If I understand it, this was a special meeting. Not a regular meeting.
Right, it got changed on the website.
Okay, I already presented it. Yeah. Okay. And under the minutes. And it's attached. Will be seven two. And then also, if you could add the eight six. That was adjourned. And I, it's very brief, I made copies for everyone, just so folks could approve today.
You ready to check it out?
No.
Okay.
I have others. I'm not picking. On page two. Question A. On short term rental parentheses, S T A should be S T Rs.
Thank you.
I mean, adjournment, last one, I know you've been meaning to X off role, although something. To the. And. On six on your reports. Just making sure I'm correct, that all of those are none, from my record. Yeah, okay. So those would changes, if I could just distribute.
Well, six, there is a zooming that's usually reported.
Oh, thank you. Oh, yeah, and it says report, others are none. But I'd like to just distribute the eight sixes. They're very brief. I adapted them as I could. Anyways. Simple. Thank you. It's all for the direction, if anybody else takes changes.
Just want to say, everybody good with that? The declaration of capital interests has already been cleared. Public comment. Now, any person shall be permitted to address the meeting of the P C.
Sorry, Keith, I have to interrupt a point of that. We do need a motion to approve the agenda as amended.
We can force them to approve the agenda that we amended to.
Second. Both.
That be in all favor, or does that need to be a roll call?
There's no. Your voice. A voice? Yes, yeah, sorry, okay, all in favor?
Right.
I.
Those. All right, let's start scanning the public count. Any person shall be permitted to address the meeting of the P C. Public count shall be carried out according to the following rules and procedures. Comment shall be directed to the P C with questions straight there. Any person wishing to address the P C on Zoom, please use the raise hand feature. We will. Invite up to talk. Any person wishing to address the P C shall speak from the lectern. Persons may address the P C on matters that are relevant to the township planning and zoning issues. The person shall be allowed to speak more than once on the same matter, excluding the time needed to answer a P C member's question. Public comment should be limited to three minutes per person. I'd like to just explain to everybody why we're here today at seven thirty in the morning. After a couple of days of trying to find a day that everybody. All the P C members here could meet, this was the best day that we could get here all together. It'll be in that, our meeting was canceled. Uh, last week, we had to. Take care of some issues that are. Of course, on this agenda here today, and this was the best time of the day to. Other than that. Anybody in the audience like to come up and speak?
I know.
Okay.
And I'm clarifying your rules, so that I can speak on. Different issues, so it's a different three minute time, right? That's what your rules say, is speaking what not more than once to each, so that I'm not confused and you're not, because I've heard it at a different meeting twice. Different white water township, several places.
This says public comment should be limited to three minutes per person.
But read another rule of mine, it says not more than once per issue, please, on an issue.
This isn't, this doesn't say per issue.
It says on an issue, on an issue.
So it's public comment should be limited to three minutes per person.
Okay, so, but when you read your rules, and I'm, I'm sorry, I was clarifying, because we've got different rules to apply differently at White Water Township, so it's great. And it says no person should be allowed to speak more than once on the same matter. Excluding the time needed for the P C to ask questions.
Correct.
Okay, so I have two different matters.
Right, but you still have three months per person.
Cover both.
That's what the rule says.
To cover both, it doesn't say to cover, and so how, so how does this say, no, the person should be allowed to speak more than once on the same matter. I have two different matters, are always to me.
Perhaps, perhaps you speak on your first matter, we try to make sure there's no one else, and then you can speak again.
Yeah, I mean, I, I, I have two.
How long has Brandy put?
I. Here, at different meetings, different ways. Okay, remind you, you're gonna. I, I'm just trying to, you know.
Why don't you just go ahead, I.
Okay. Okay, the first matter, that's the I R O S committee.
Yes.
Thank you for forming an information gathering committee to address problems you are trying to solve for the betterment of the entire differs by white water township population. I did apply for the I R O S committee on time, and I do think we remain concerned that there wasn't a basis differing views to select the committee. That's why when we came back to it, I think that was right, so the process was extended. Last winter, I received a call about the possibility being on the committee, I did ask if I could do the part of the work via Zoom, because I travel a lot. I was told no, and my travels would probably be the reason I would not be considered, it's okay, well, those are the rules, although the rules are changing now, we're including Zoom, I think, maybe, I'm confused. At the time, the committee formation and goals were not yet clear either, because I asked about it. So this summer, after returning and after applying, I was led to believe someone on this board right here would call me to talk about my application. I was told that directly by one of your members. To date, I have not received such a call. The conditions for me have changed since last mention, and it might be possible I could be here. In addition, you might be in the process of adopting me as Zoom as a means of two way communication. These changes and conditions, I told, uh, I was told existed. I hope you consider a mixed board of differing opinions who are willing to listen, gather, and assemble what is shared with them. I'm, I, I am a special community member, being invited to homes and having home meetings and gathering information. I'm hoping this is done in a variety of methods, such as a small group post meetings and the invitation of the resident. There also could be small group Zoom meetings with folks who are out of town. The variety of ways to gather opinions is wide and varied, please keep this process open and fair. Okay, you want me to talk now, or skip it on the floor? Okay. This one issue I suspect is on S D R regulations, but it's connected to your agenda today. I've spoken several times on this issue at your meetings, in summary, I do want to S D Rs and with regulations allowed on white water township. You have a proposal, I believe it's a great beginning for dialogue. In short, what I've heard at community meetings, those opposed to S T Rs are, are because of problems created by gas and owners, noise, overloaded houses, disrespect of neighbors' properties and bonds. And just an overall negative experience, that's terrible. The proposed ordinance does address these issues in detail, it goes to step beyond many areas such as providing brochure for owners to use with guests. And a checklist to work on applying for a license from the township, I applaud the people who put this together. I learned at the Parks and Rec Committee meeting, that I attended, they are hopeful someday to attract larger self-kept. Their events as the ball field is improved, they're maybe someday expanded. They are also systematically hoping to improve our nature areas. At one of the meetings, there was discussion that maybe someday having a cubed village town area. It, this committee is discussing the possibility of wineries, tasting rooms, and events with, areas with regulations. I continue to hear many community members move. You know, several years ago, a rural atmosphere, I married and moved here over fifty years ago, and our existence is being threatened by outsiders. Our rural area will go away as harmless as my family, a divorce to sell, to sub, to subdivisions. Just to exist, please help our children diversify, remain in the farming business. Boating down S T Rs will not stop the tourists, you are trying to attract a flood fields. The ball fields here locally, wineries, and our nature areas. It just pushes them to big businesses like Ranch Travers Resort. Williamsburg might lose the opportunity to create a cute thriving business community, like I heard suggested at one of the meetings. Why not support local S T R owners also? We're talking about supporting winery only shop owners, all these other things, why not S T R owners? Let's work together to problem solve, living together as S T Rs and regulation, and try to be supportive, cordial, and kind to each other. Thank you for letting me talk.
Do you like me to time or?
Yeah. Morning. Who?
Okay, good morning, Rachel Steelman, Chris Broad. I'm addressing the commission today to express concerns about the prioritization of agenda ends relative to the master plan stated. While discussions on wineries and event barns are not without merit, their prominence in recent meetings raises questions about alignment with the master plan's priorities. For clarity, I conducted a keyword analysis of the final master plan adopted on February fifth, and have provided a handout summarizing findings. Wineries are mentioned once in relation to tourism and. Event barns are mentioned seven times, all pertaining to the two thousand nineteen survey. Enforcement is mentioned six times, primarily referencing junk plate and the development of estuary ordinance. Short term rentals are mentioned ten times with explicit ties to specific goals. This analysis indicates that short term rentals are a high priority in the fiscal plan. In April, I submitted an S T R organs application, which appeared in the main line of commission packet. However, as reflected in the meeting minutes, no substantive, substantive discussion occurred despite multiple public comments and many pieces of response. Being submitted relative to S T Rs. In Congress, wineries and more recently event barns have dominated multiple meetings. I respectfully ask why commission resources, including staff time and wages, are being allocated to the more gravity topics. While on ordinance addressing a documented priority remains unaddressed. As a stakeholder incurring associated costs, I will continue to advocate for alignment with the master plan's priorities. This misalignment is evident in the public record and risks undermining the commission's commitment to its own guiding document. I urge the commission to refocus its efforts on the master plan's priorities, particularly S T Rs, to ensure resources are used effectively in any service of the community's stated goals. And also give that take so.
Help me. Help me. I help. Thanks, Tony. I'll save it in a minute, I'm waiting for it when we get out of the room.
I think we're on, I don't know. We have the participants, we have.
Somebody just popped, and also.
Yeah, Rick Danson.
Yeah. I've always been three eighty eight Winnie Lane. It's a plan. I got a lot of time and energy into this plan. Please stop adding more stuff to your table until you put. Some infractions back on the books and private roads, because now you're putting a winery out there, and there's no protection. For the people that it might affect. Public health and safety wise. Um, this is a plan, it's forever changing, but I don't even think we're looking at it to see if we're even using it. Help me here, guys, because I could go page by page and pick out and have a few of them here, but, um. Slow it down, because now it's almost time to play. It's getting very, very hard to keep everything together, and I'm still waiting to see where the definitions. I like that.
Anybody else?
Kim Angus from Bridge Trail. Um. I wasn't planning on necessarily making this meeting, because it's at seven thirty in the morning, and if you want to get rid of me, that's a really good way to do it. So that tells you. How much I felt I needed to be here. Um, and. Soon wasn't enough. Two months ago, my read on. The status of the township was we had one pending lawsuit. One month ago, we had two pending lawsuits. When I went through the packet, because I actually read those things, I don't know when I was on the P C and I'm reading them now. Um. My read on our township right now is we have seven pending lawsuits. For short terms. A year ago, this body had time. And five years ago, when the planning commission, um. Passed an agreement that we were going to wait for the state legislature to finish the bill that they were working on, because they had a bill in front of them, and well, you know, they don't care, we're not doing that. Um, we agreed to wait until the state made up their mind. Um. You're out of time. This is something that is right now. White Water Township's in a barrel and going over Niagara Falls, and if, this is something that needs to happen immediately. This is not something that you have the luxury of waiting two years to develop, and ordinances can take that long, I. Having been in your chair, I do understand, it takes a long time to put together ordinances very often. Um. I want to encourage this board, and I know that there's going to be another meeting for short term, and also this isn't the, um, your public hearing. But we have seven pending lawsuits. I really want to encourage this board to seriously consider, this ordinance needs to be passed, the one you have available at the moment. Might not be perfect. You can immediately set the I R O S at looking at revisions, I would say it'd be more reasonable to wait a year and see how it works, because you'll be much better informed at that point. Um, in addition to that, uh, my comment to the board, if I'm able to make their meeting. Um, we need an immediate order to go around on prosecution of short term rentals for this year, you're not going to stop anyone's contracts this, this year. And this is getting really, really ridiculous. Uh, to. Take time to develop an ordinance to allow, while actively seeking out prosecuting people for having it. No one's going to stop their short term rental until they know what happens here, so we're, this is a massive waste of township resources. Um. I just wanted to. Kind of highlight that, because sometimes it's easy, I missed it the first time, I said, hey, I were up to three or four lawsuits, and then I went back over the, your, your packet, you're set. Thank you.
Anybody else? Steve Brad, it's Chris Broad. How many of you have abused a short term rental? Anybody? Not a single, not a single one of you, okay, you have, enjoy it. Yeah, I do short term rentals, I've gone to short term rentals for probably the last ten or twelve years. My family gets together at a short term rental, different short term rentals every time. Uh, some things that I found that all of the short term rentals are, are really simple. First of all. There's a noise ordinance that has been put in every single one. And it says that the noise, with the noise ordinance, when we have to sign that to, to rev that place. That if we break the noise ordinance, and they, they give reports, they will terminate the contract at that time with loss of all funds. You know? We've never once broken noise ordinance. Because we don't want that. Um, and so noise ordinances, if they're fulfilled, are a good thing. So anyway. On every single one of them. Because my family had, comes with from. Five different directions. There's at least five to seven cars. Every single one of them, the places that we've stayed at, have had parking regulations. So that, there it is, the parking regulations are there, there's no on street parking, it all has to be off street parking. We know ahead of time that's what it has to be, and if it is violated, what happens? You lose everything. And you're out. Those are some simple ways to take care of some of the problems that you're dealing with. Uh, and the, the problem, in, in my estimation, can be just as bad for a neighbor who decides to invite the whole county over. For a graduation party, or for something, yeah, that might be a one time thing, but it can be just as, as frustrating as something else. Now, let's say the neighbor decides, we're going to have a party every week. That can happen, how are you going to deal with that, should you deal with that any different than you deal with a short term rental? I, I don't think so, I, I'm here saying that, yeah, there, there should be some regulation. But short term rentals aren't really necessarily the problem here. It's enforcement of some simple things that can help out with everything. In that, within those areas. Thank you for your time. Thank you. Yeah.
Do you not know the stones of giving name by that with your address?
Oh, certainly.
Mark Kranach, twenty three forty one, Abbey Road. Um. As a long term property owner, uh, because it's not my primary residence, but I'm up here close to being my property residence for the last twenty five years. Um. I, I feel compelled to speak this morning, because I've heard, uh, many pro, pro, uh, short term rental folks. The fact is, is that you do have to have a. A balanced way of looking at the short term rentals. The gentleman indicates that noise ordinances should be enforced, well, the issue at this point in time, and the reason that. There's such a degree of controversy and so on, with regards to short term rentals, because we've, as a township, failed to create an enforcement component. And that's the sad part, guys, the amendment as proposed by Ms. Steelman and other folks, does not have any kind of penalty. Nor does it create a degree of responsibility on the basis of the way you look at it. Um, on review, and I know the folks may very well have reviewed, uh, the proposal, but it doesn't create a vehicle with regards to. Creating a degree of responsibility for that particular person that is renting. In other words, it's, it's a letter, it's a slap on the wrist, and you don't have, you have to violate this three or four times, or you actually have a penalty that may involve some monetary, um. Issues, but that is what, when you look at it, it's just quote unquote, the cost of business and doing things. It does not encourage people to create an understanding, say, hey, wait a minute, we've got to be more responsible about this. The gentleman that just talked about, well, you're going to fault the loss of your deposit and such. Well, you know, I'll be honest with you, that does stop the folks from doing what they're doing. I'm not a recipient in the last three years of having neighbors that have decided to do short term rentals. The issue in, at this point in time, is a gentleman and lady who have actually purchased the property next to us, but they can't afford it, so therefore they're doing short term rentals this year. And that's been stated publicly. Why should I suffer my dream of having something that's owned, where I support the community? I, I visit all of the, the resources that are available, I. I, I visit all of the, the resources that are available. I respect and enjoy the things that we have. Uh, available to us both as tourists as well as somebody who lives here. Okay, but I'm not, I'm not a permanent resident. I can't call myself that. Because of the laws and the stipulations we got in the state. But I do feel that if we're going to approach this in a way that's going to provide benefit for everybody. You have to create a mechanism with which the actual person owning the property does indeed. Have a degree of responsibility and understands that it has some teeth in it. Not something that is just a slap on the wrist. Ergo, we have the lawsuits pending at this point in time because of our enforcement issues. When you've asked the people to abide by the present. I apologize. By the present standing, we have two former board members for the planning committee already breaking the township rule. Okay, what allows you to say that they're not going to continue to do that and violate it again in the future if it does not actually quote hurt them? They have, if, if you have to incentivize somebody by making it financial, well, then that's what we have to look at, but it's really the enforcement component that we could. To then undertake. Thank you for my comments.
Thank you.
Someone text me on Zoom and just asked that you all pull your mics up and then speak loudly to your mics. Just have a heart, thank you. Thank you.
Zoom is working.
I'm sorry.
Zoom is working.
Yes.
The comment before that they couldn't pass that through.
Everybody else, what would I say?
Just a point longer, uh, we cannot respond to public comments. So if. They ask us the question, we cannot respond. Is that correct?
Uh, they asked a question, like we, we can ask them questions.
But they cannot ask us anything.
It's still the authority theory.
Hey, any other questions in the house?
Any question on Zoom?
All right, I'll move on.
Okay, time to move on with your live answer question. Okay, I'm confused. You're not letting people talk on Zoom? I thought it was just for a public hearing.
Just for public.
Oh, it's just a public.
But you did state it in your opening comments, so I feel like we have a button going down enough when we get to do this, so. Help me here.
Well, I, I will, I will say that I was, I misunderstood. When uh, first we had Zoom and then we had problems with it and they had it redone. Um, and then Tom Dippie. I thought they had, I thought my understanding was they were going to allow it everywhere. But from what I understand now, that's not the case. What's going to happen now is that. Public Zoom, excuse me, or public comment probably during public hearings.
That, that's the current tension of the town board. Public comment. No. The agenda says. Public comment, you know.
Is public comment still open?
Uh, yeah, well. Different subject.
Kim Mangus, different subject, same subject. Um, at the board meeting. The discussion, at least by the time it hit the back of the room. Was that. The board was going to open up public comment for all public hearings. But they was at the discretion of this planning commission. Whether or not they wanted to open up public. Comment via Zoom or the remainder of the meeting. So it's not that the board said yes, no. The board said yes, public hearing. It's up to you to make a determination for the rest of it. So I understand it's not on today's agenda, but I would really encourage you, as many people have. This is something that's important to our community. Please put public comment. It, it'll cost you ten minutes, okay? Please put public comment back on Zoom. It was, Randy can correct me if he doesn't agree. I believe it was left at the discretion of the planning.
Was it? It wasn't. Debate this, but it wasn't clear as to whether or not the town board could. Direct the planning commission or the other uh. Zoom. But the action was taken by the town board to allow public comment because of the issues that we were having with the capacity of the room. That we were having in respect to it, public comment on. Public hearings was on Zoom that might alleviate the problem. You know, we were close to not have, not being able to have it canceled. We had six.
Books are good enough.
Thank you.
I'm, I'm organized, Roland. I just want to talk about public comment too because um. I'm getting messages from people that, that it was really difficult to sign on to Zoom. I'm a regular Zoom user. Um, so. I have to come up here when I'm not here and I have a public comment, I have to drive three hundred miles to make a public comment, so. I'd like for that to be back on. Um, but they said that it was really difficult today to get onto Zoom. There wasn't a link to click on. I don't know. Because I'm not on Zoom right now. But there wasn't a link to click on, so it was really difficult to, to sign on. You can't copy the link and get on, so people are real upset about it.
My understanding is it's the same link for every.
I'm sorry.
My understanding is it's the same link for every meeting now.
I don't know that because I don't run Zoom, so I don't.
Somewhere on Zoom from the way, so I don't know.
Okay. Thank you. Oh, that's nice.
Okay, proposed public comment.
Recording in progress.
All right, approval of minutes.
Are we allowed, are we allowed to comment? On any of the public comments?
Yes, later on.
Okay.
Approval of minutes of previous and regular meeting plus the addition of eight-six.
We're moving at seven-two first.
Yes. Once July second. Do we have any? Members or? Not noted. We have to vote separately on each one or?
And we've asked the queeness, some people do combine them, but.
Trying to make motion except the reading of minutes. Uh, or. Monday, July second. Twenty-twenty-five. Second.
Our second, pelotonist seconds. Overcome. Straten. Yeah. There were probably just a new.
All in favor? Any opposed? We're in the second one.
And we accept the Wednesday, August sixth, um, direct minutes as um, written.
Second post-lady. All in favor? Any opposed? Period. All right, uh. Did it get a copy of a spreadsheet that was. Sent to us by. Wendy the clerk. Uh, I made some uh. Changes out, so they look easier to read for us. Just move back. Anybody have any questions on? No, this is a fluid, you know, less, a little change. I think I'm also going to do, try to do a list of our. Meeting minutes, uh, public comment to. I'll see how that goes. Questions?
I, I have one to say this was updated. Since. I printed it, but I can find an updated.
It's updated when I posted it.
So, that one's current.
Excuse me, we're thinking, has, thinking of the data. Like, where is it posted?
It's in the packet, eight-eight. Eight-eight, okay, thanks.
Don't move the strider for report.
It's page nine of the. Good morning. Anyone have any questions about my report? On this, the correctly uh. Comment made where we do not have, at least not from zoning seven lawsuits pending. I'm only aware of one. I don't know where everyone else is getting it. Uh, as a zoning administrator and enforcement, uh, my goal is compliance with our zoning ordinances. And no, our not ordinances today does it state that short-term renting your property. Living in your camper, rent out your house. Any of that is an allowed use or a permitted use or a special use, except in a designated area, so. See, I'm having questions first. About my report. Uh, it's been a very busy summer. I think as of this morning, I'm on like zoning permit sixty-two. So there's a lot of activity, there's a lot of building going on. I did give you guys each a um. Packet for the September third meeting, there will be another hearing. Um, Grand Travers Plastics. Now that they've had their property rezoned to industrial, they will be moving forward with their bill. The uh, Fordy Prager, the reviewing stormwater, I should have that in the next couple of days. So, uh, but I can email you everything that I sent you today online, so that if you need to zoom in on it and have a bigger picture of. Uh, plans, you'll have that on email later, but.
So with regard to the comment about southern lawsuits, is it just, is it the word lawsuits that's incorrect? Is it that it's, people have been sent letters?
Uh, the, it is, the attorney is, is sending letters, yeah, but we have five lawsuits. One.
There's still the one.
We have one, we have one, we're waiting for hearing day. It was uh. So the attorney's letters. Based on our misdemeanor citations, which is the only thing we have as an option. Uh, but obviously we go for compliance. We go for compliance with all of our. Uh, ordinances, so, um, but the attorney is um, looking into five additional. Um, short-term rentals that I've gotten numerous complaints about. Um, but today, it's. I mean, I know that there's a lot of them out there, um, and I kind of feel a little guilty not sending them all letters, but I'm trying to pace this process out. Um, and I'm hoping people are going to follow what our ordinances say and try to. Adhere to what they say today. Because I can't. Enforce something that's not on the books, so I can only go reports documented and approved by this. Board and by our township board. But it is, um, there's a lot of activity in uh. In zoning right now. Any questions?
I have one. With regard to. Grand Travers Plastics, Fordy Fraser has the site plan. They're looking at that for compliance with. Stormwater, you said?
Yes.
And then anything else? What's, what's their, what's their scope of work?
I would say, I, this is our first opportunity to work with them, so they are kind of doing it at a high level. I mean, obviously the first thing they said, well, your. Your zoning map shows that this is commercial, not industrial. Well, that's, that was a good thing they picked up on, yeah. And I said, oh, yeah, well, that got changed in the last month, so. That was a good catch, so they have all the information I've got from Grand Travers Plastics and uh, from Peninsula Construction and. So I'm working with Travis one. Who's compiling it all, so he has everything I have and he is going to reach out to Chris Dittenberg. At uh, Peninsula Construction if he has any other questions.
So their report will be in the packet. Oh, right.
Uh, they said they determine it in a week. Yeah, but I know that Contra, uh, Peninsula Construction did do some uh, preliminary numbers on stormwater calculations and. And Travis was going to work with Chris, so we should have that in the next week. Uh, I just know that we have a lot of activity going on. I mean, if you'd prefer we hold off, I haven't publicly noticed this yet, if you would prefer to hold off on. Notice, why, it's going to be a, it's going to be another, they're going to want a special meeting, maybe get it in on.
There's a lot of time, it doesn't seem like there's a lot of time.
I have just enough time if I get a notice. This weekend.
But it's the same plan, you, so it's not that.
Do we not need to notice it publicly?
It's time to public hearing for a second.
Welcome in better. That's awesome.
I have a question.
Yeah.
The um. The project, um, Boompad Road, they're demoing a barn and then below that it says fourteen feet by twenty feet by twenty feet high.
Yeah.
I'm not sure what that's referring to. Is that the?
Is that a permit? That's their width, their.
Of the barn that they're demoing?
Also on the building. On the thing, on the.
It's a, it does, it's a.
Side side.
Okay.
They're definitely what's there and they're reconstructing it exactly.
Okay, it just doesn't say that on our chart. It just says, it just gives us dimensions.
I, I do condense it a little bit. There may be more information. If you want to come back and pull up some minutes, we'll go and sit and look at it if you need more detail. But if they're done one hour, it's falling down, so they're. They just don't want to lose the space, so they can melt. But if anything, they might come along, you know, at best. Okay.
Okay.
Sure.
Um, relating to the short term rentals, um, is there any precedence for um, other townships held off and enforcing while they? While they are reviewing something.
You know, somebody commented about why not put a moratorium on it? You don't have anything on the books to put a moratorium. So how do you put a moratorium on something that's not even supposed to be?
My question, is there anything else? Heard of any other townships doing?
Haven't. So usually if you want to halt something, you just, so I mean, you could repeal all of her zoning ordinances. You can repeal your, all your enforcement ordinance. I mean, if you could put a moratorium on all of that, it just.
That's not my question. My question is.
I don't know what's going on in the other townships regarding this.
I would suggest. Everybody. Read the journey, adjoining townships ordinances. I've read three of them. Ishbein. And we don't give very slurghos. And uh. No, township, they have ordinances.
But this town.
They are not permitted. In our township, period. So I don't know how anybody can have a lawsuit. This was for something. We don't have. Uh, but the point is, before we get very far into this. Other townships, if you've read the newspapers, have had issues with these. They've corrected them. They've got ordinances, uh. With the. Uh. One that we had submitted to, simply it's not good at all. It needs to be significantly. We're not discussing. Guy, I have somewhere hard to rest. We're going to discuss.
You have to openly hear all of this stuff. You know, and there's going to be a time and a place for that at the August twenty-sixth meeting. And, and when you have a hearing, it's your opportunity to listen to what everyone has to say, pro and con, but you have to have, keep an open mind. And look at this from both sides. So myself, as a zoning administrator, I'm, I'm enforcing what is on the books today. What it states. That's why I put four-point-oh-one. Every alteration, every use. If it's not defined in our ordinance as an approved use, a special use, a permitted use, it is not allowed.
The question was just this.
Yeah, I don't, I don't. There's, it's going on all, it's, it's an issue everywhere in the state of Michigan. It just is. But the fact that we don't have anything on the books with force means they're not compliant. And so if I have attorneys that are sending letters to them. To gain compliance, that's not a lawsuit. That is. Working with our attorneys to get compliance from members of our. Community that are not complying with our existing ordinances. And even the. Amended zoning ordinance or police power ordinance that is coming before the planning commission, August twenty-sixth. Is a proposal. Of something that doesn't currently exist, so it's technically not amending anything greater than. Overall ordinance or overall police power ordinance. So it's not amending something that currently exists, it's adding to. And that's what you'll be reviewing and looking at, kind of true. But that's just my opinion, uh, preface that too. Okay?
Any other questions for David?
No, thank you for clarifying that on the lawsuits.
Yes.
Yeah, we don't. I have one pending lawsuit and that's with Denise Hydeish on Elk Lake Trail. Numerous complaints over more than a year and a half and more have poured in since, you know. Um, but that's the only thing that we are pursuing legally. From a lawsuit in court. And when I hear lawsuit, I hear judges are going to be involved, but right now that's the only one that I'm aware of. Okay? Thanks.
I don't have anything on here. You need your thing?
No, just the ROI.
Andy, do you have anything what I had from the township board?
It's a few things, um, we should be hearing this week still on that rural prosperity grant. It's still, it's supposed to be this week. It's only Thursday. But it's only there to school and all. Um, those who don't know, the township board has moved to a twice a month schedule of meetings. There's one actually tonight. And then there's one on the fourth Thursday of the month in the morning at nine thirty. You're not aware of that. That's, that's the new schedule going forward. Of course, of course. Uh, the new board's trying to schedule the new hearing for civil infractions that will be discussed tonight. The date and alterations as far as the venue and zoom, all that kind of stuff. And then, uh, as mentioned, we are going to be having to do a new zoning map to zoning changes that were made. It was important that we keep the map up to date and list the amendments and probably do that, which was never done before. So. But the zoning map was questionable for, so. Anyway, I think that's it for the town board. And maybe just one other thing, the, I would mention that the. State planning conference is in Kalamazoo this year and, um, and we are all members now, uh, in the Association of Planning. We're beginning that. On top of that, the national planning conferences is in Detroit this year, which is the first time back in. Forty years that happening. So it's kind of exciting. National planning conference here. So I don't know if there's any interest in pending that. You can do it both in person and.
Do you know when they are?
Uh, it's a small proposal. You'll, you'll be getting information. Did you get the newsletter?
I have not, no.
Okay.
Should, let's say should we have to check again?
All right. I'll stop you down for a little here and away. All right. Doesn't always submit any status applicants.
So we received eleven applications. And I ordered that moves on to you, for every member of the planning commission before the previous meeting. And I'd like to apologize to Mrs. Dean that I did not give that to you.
It's, that's on me.
Um, we did, it was, it was a bit of a fluid situation. Um, we were hoping to do it with, just with, um, people volunteering, you know, via like word of mouth. And then decided to do the application. My understanding from the township supervisor is that you do have to be present at the meetings in person. I haven't been made aware of any change to that, but, um, that's, that's my current understanding. So what we, what we need to do is hopefully everybody's had an opportunity to review the applications and, um, we'd like to select five. Of the applicants to join the ROS and then one PC member besides myself. So I'll be cheering, um, at least for the, um. We're going to be covering multiple topics and I will be cheering through the short-term rental research. Uh, and then we made switch gears for capital improvements. Um, or we're going to be doing things concurrently. So I'm not exactly sure how that's going to work out. We'll have to kind of see how that goes. So the applicants will be working on data collection, um, only. And then we will not be interpreting that data. We will just be presenting the raw data to the planning commission for discussion and, um. Uh, depending on what happens with, um, Rachel Steelman's ordinance, uh, either modifying that or, uh, writing a new or. Ordinance based on the data collection in our discussions. So the ROS, I just want to be super clear, the ROS is not going to be. Doing anything other than collecting data. So we, while we did ask the applicants whether they were currently affiliated with the short-term rental. That was specifically to make sure that we do have, um, of. Points of view, we have things, all points of view represented at the committee, um, but we won't be, uh, creating. Um, any sort of ordinance within the committee. We will strictly be collecting data. So, um, I know we have a few of the applicants in the app, in the audience today, um. And we have a couple of applicants, one in particular who generally attends all of our meetings, which is greatly appreciated. So, uh, I don't, I don't know if you want to just go around the table and talk about. If you've, if you've got opinions about who you think would be a, a good applicant. And again, we're looking for balance.
Do you have, uh, do you have suggestions?
Um, I. I probably spent the most time with them. Um, I, I am, uh.
I'm sorry, but well, the number.
Yeah, we've got eleven applicants and, um, we'd like to have five on the committee plus another, uh, planning commission member. And does somebody have a question?
I did. Have any of these applicants indicated they may be gone or unable to attend?
Yes.
So should we be ruling those out? At this point?
Yeah, and I think. So I know, I know, I think right now we probably. It's tough because like Miss, um, Mrs. Dean was stating, you know, her situation may be changing and she may be able to attend all of the meetings. So I'm, I'm not sure. What I, what I was thinking was we would probably select a couple of, um. Alternates. Also, I'm assuming that there's going to be some, um, attrition once we're through with the short-term rentals. Because I think that's probably what the majority of the applicants are interested in. And so, um, so some alternates would probably be. A good idea so that we can call on, on people to replace people as they, as they leave. So I guess, I guess right now what I'm, what I'm suggesting is that we're not as concerned about whether people can be there because now that I don't know that about. Every applicant. It was stated in the job description, um, so.
Got a few comments there over here.
Yeah.
Just talk the whole process in, in general here. Well, first of all, I think we should thank the members for stepping forward and, I mean, it took time throughout the application, obviously. You know, their enthusiasm to look here, uh, of doing this, um. I guess I just want to echo, like you said, the ROS is not a forum for convincing or advocating or promoting one way or the other. But SDR is the focus of the ROS was to find out what residents think because really nobody knows. You know, all we have is the Matthew Lamb survey that gave us the idea or notion that a lot of third supporters without regulation with third dog on the hall.
Support was.
So we, we know that, but we haven't dug in deep to the, the extent where we can have that. So I, the other thing I wanted to mention too is that I think the issues of SDR and the capital improvements. I think we're most significant, well, among law companies to review with. Sometimes, I don't know. Capital improvements plans that look forward in terms of improvements in the township and possibly a new township hall or sewer. Uh, the fire station, all kinds of things. I think that I'm necessary to sort out and prioritize an addition search. Which can really change the complexion of the township a great deal. A different trajectory. The township never dealt with short-term rentals and this was our chance to do it. It's important that we spend the time and do this correctly.
And to clarify, are we going to be working on both topics at the same time or?
We're hoping.
SDRs first and capital improvements second?
I believe we're hoping to work on things concurrently, you said.
Concurrently, okay.
If they're spending all time with, with one, the other, but yeah.
And we're also looking for support for in terms of the capital improvements plan particularly, uh, to, in terms of the fundamental details of. Uh, in the engineering or architectural support that we need to identify costs and, um. Renovation issues and all that kind of stuff. So we need to have some support for that.
What, do you have any other, um, parameters? Like I, I was thinking of, you know, as we, I divide up the township in quadrants. It's one from each quadrant so that they're, we're not, uh, heavy in like one area of our township versus the other three. Uh, I, that was one of the considerations I was thinking. I, I don't know if that would be of interest to you, the rest of you.
So I, I would think so. Okay. Yeah.
Let's get the easy one out of the way. Uh, Dave, you still, you still interested in serving on that? Sure, it's a second one. Anybody else interested? There we go. First one. It'll be Rain and Dave.
And then five others, correct?
Right.
Okay. Right, five applicants and then, um, uh, one or two alternates to, to.
It's, it's summer and fall and winter.
Right.
Yeah.
Can I ask a question?
Um, if you have a public moment later, you can do it again. We're just trying to get through this.
No problem.
All right. So how do we want to continue? Did you have, uh, suggestions?
I do, but I would prefer to receive, um, from you first.
I have. Right, Rachel, Dan, uh, Heidi, uh, one of the, uh, the, uh. She attends all the meetings and they, they know that, uh, everyone's, uh, where she goes over the details very thoroughly. I don't know that I. That, you know, I can say that he has a little more together in this, and I think should be very good in digging her details. I agree with you. Heidi is a very detailed fact finder.
I just, can I just say one thing?
Save it for public hearing.
No, since I had to give some public.
What's that?
Look and see how the ROS was done last.
Heidi.
Thank you.
Um, do we go around the group and give us like the top five names and then see what? You know, where it goes from there.
Sure, just for so.
Oh, thanks. Okay. So my top five, again, I am going for quadrants and I was going for a capital improvement, uh, financial background. So, and not in any specific order, uh, Linda Long, Rodney Rebant, and, uh. Pardon? Am I going?
Yeah, can you start again?
Yeah, um, not in any particular order. Linda Long. And she's in the, um, southeast quadrant. Rodney Rebant.
Linda Norman.
Linda Long, number three, uh, on your list. Rodney Rebant, number nine. And he's in the, uh, southeast, um, at.
In southwest.
Uh. Island Dew Drive is east of Williamsburg Road, I believe, I'm actually.
Southwest.
Is it west? Okay. Then west, that's even better. Uh, I think, number, uh, one, William Clark off of the list, and that's his northeast. Uh, Debbie McKeon. Northeast and, um, Kim Mangus. Southeast if I'm right on my mapping. And I, I'm just going to go with the top five and those are, I, I have to say that everyone has exceptional. Qualifications, um. So I was looking more for quadrants and experiencing, uh, financial background or capital improvements. Uh, over all, all of the other qualifications, not that, um. All of you, I had a great, great, um, experience.
So I did the same thing, so. Open my hands to. Uh, Logan Clark, Rodney Rebant, Debbie McKeon, Barbara Dean, and Ken Rock.
Clark, Rebant, McKeon, did you say?
Dean. And Rock, yeah.
All right, it's good. No, quite, Brad, Rebant.
McKeon, Debbie.
Work again.
Uh, Dean. And, um. Correct. Who was the last one? Credit, K R I N O C K. Yeah. Credit was the last one. Uh, Dean.
I'm covered.
Yeah.
Any suggestions?
I can give you my five. Clark, Dean, McKeon, Boneless, Credit. I'm going to repeat.
Oh.
Harvey, McKeon, Boneless, and Credit.
Yes.
Earl, do you have a top five?
Hey. Hello, Bobby.
Can you give what his names?
Uh, about. Well. Well. William Clark. Good, Heidi.
Mm-hmm.
Debbie, uh, June.
You know, Heidi. You know, I have one more. Heidi. I consider that how they say Heidi. Rebant, Clark, Boneless, and McKeon.
Heidi. Um, well, with consideration about how we talked about being present for all the meetings, that was kind of altered what I had to choose, but I have Clark. Um. Rod, I can't pronounce his last name.
Rebant.
Sinis name. No, no, Consinus. Uh. McKeon. Rebant, and Stillman.
Okay. And mine was, um, Dean, Credit. I hate us. I might be main, main blowing that, sorry. Um, Steelman, Boneless.
And, uh, mine was Wolf. Dillon, Robbie, Rebant. Uh, Clark. Thank you.
Okay, hang on a second. I've got one, one of us. And then event Clark and Mangus was left him.
Yes.
Oh, yeah. Right now I have, um, Clark has received six votes. McKeon. Five, seven. Just looking for the ones that pop up the most, Credit. Three.
So we have four with five. Almost rebound. And then, Clark.
Our almost, what was the third one that you have?
One with three band, two.
Oh, yeah. Okay, just five for, yeah. Okay. I just want to take a quick look.
Is, what is it, twenty-seven? The count should end up, should count end up to be twenty-seven, because we should have five except for.
Carl was four.
How many, three?
Did you draw a portfolio?
So we need to add, add up all the.
Five, except Carl had four, and there's one, two, three, four, five, six, so thirty, thirty-four, thirty-four. You should have thirty-four votes total, okay. Okay, William Clark. Alright, and then uh, who do you have next?
I have thirty-four.
Okay. So after the, the three people with five votes.
Then there's three of them with three. And so Barbara Dean. Mark, friend, Crinick, so pronounced correctly. And Rachel Stewart.
Okay. So we need to work between those, those three to select two more. And then one of them would be an alternate. And then we need.
We don't see just like one.
Oh, we have Clark, we have Clark, almost, and Rebant with five, right? McKeon.
And McKeon.
And McKeon, okay, sorry. So we, yeah.
Uh, Bollmuth had four. They're kind of there, right?
Okay.
So we have four now, and we need to pick one out of these three.
Right.
And then we have to do two alternates.
Okay, so between Crinick, Dean and Steelman.
So, looking at that, like I feel like we asked. One of our questions, if they had any natural current S T R.
Mm-hmm.
We have right now. Four members with a no, we have nobody with a yes. Um, Crinick is a no for that as well.
Mm-hmm.
So that is Dean and Steelman. I feel like. In all fairness, it's right to consider who's working and doing the work already.
Mm-hmm.
And passionate about it, and probably has proven that. They would, if they show up to these things that are involved and try and figure it out. I think, you think considering that. I think it's important to have at least one person on here that's currently dealing with one, since we have a heavy no. And not that these people are against it, it's all with, they all said yes to regulation, which is pretty good. Um, but I think that we need to consider that as well, um, and then considering, I guess. Being at the meetings is important and we don't know for sure, Barbara Dean can do that, my vote would be for Steelman then.
Any other comments on that?
I would perfectly confirm that it's that having a proposed amendment. That is being presented now is. Challenging in my mind and um, in terms of how that is being. Acted on and considered. In that what you have before you is not. The results of research that led to that, what you have is a proposed ordinance that says this is what the township should consider and initially think that is a formal. Amendment proposal. That was why I didn't include Rachel and me. Books, but because of that, and then, I think it's. I think, I think in my mind, it's a little bit like. Being served a meal without knowing what you're on before and looking at the menu. So, and that will be my own view.
I would agree with Randy, um, and Mrs. Dean did say she can. Attend, but was the last I heard, so.
I agree with that, sorry. I have a lot of, I have doubts, Rachel, don't get me wrong, but she is one proposing.
Yeah.
They have a point, but. Or some, I think that's, shouldn't be on the R O S.
Okay, so you would, you would be proposing, um, Mrs. Dean.
I, I gave you four names, I could give you a fifth one. I don't, I thought that'd be Kim Mangus.
Mm-hmm.
I can agree, a little bit of Sadie. The. Rachel did propose some, uh, this amendment should probably take care of by twenty-six, either, or against. And um. She does have a lot of research in it. I just wanted to tell her anything too, so.
Yeah, I get, I get, I understand exactly what you're saying and get both sides of it. I think that. You know, proposing an amendment. Not knowing what's gonna happen, but knowing that it's gonna be a tough approval process. Is a start, and is a start for anybody, that's the only way to start something. To go out and research independently without an R O S committee or without the backing of a board. As an individual member is a hefty, so, like a hefty task to take out, and so, I mean. To say that none of that was done, I mean, how do you, how do you conduct professional surveys when you're just independent man, bent, like. Member of the township and you don't have, you're not working with a official group. So I think, I don't necessarily think like if, if the amendment goes through and doesn't and needs adjusted, if it goes through and we continue to work on it or it doesn't. I still think that, I don't feel like Steelman will give up. I feel like, okay, well then. If this is what the township wants, then let's work on this, let's. That's like the most level-headed thing to do, if you're putting this much time into something, you're not just gonna walk away, so if we're saying we need more research to support it. I feel like she's, by applying those applications, she's saying like, I will do that.
I think.
But I think both are very great candidates.
I think the issue is there are a lot of different regulatory parameters that need to be considered. How we deal with short terminals and that should be driven by what residents are telling us in the survey or workshop or whatever they do, whatever you guys do. You know, I think that should drive the formation and content and approaches of regulations that we're aware of.
I think we need to remind ourselves too, this is not, the R O S is not just about S T Rs, it's about capital improvements, so. We need to be thinking. Both roles.
And, and my comment is, being on an R O S prior to uh, this one. Is that there were five members on the R O S and then there was fifteen people that came and helped us. So it wasn't just, we weren't, we weren't working alone, we were just the identified five, so uh, anyone can come and help. At any time, and actually it's like, um, great, we're grateful, so.
Along with that though, it is important to remember that the R O S is actually um, not uh. Part of the Open Meetings Act, while people will be welcome to join the meeting or to, to attend the meeting rather. Um, there won't be a public comment option, so the, the place for public comment will be when we're holding open houses and workshops. And that's where, that's where the public will really, where we will be getting a lot of our information that we're presenting to the planning commission, and that's why. Um, being in person, I think is very important because. We need people at those workshops that are part of the R O S to help collect that information. So, um, so we definitely welcome some of the input, but it probably won't be at our committee meetings, um, because we'll be. You know, going over data, um, and also, you know, figuring out ways to collect information and any, looking under any unturned stone. So, okay, yeah.
Marine, since you're gonna be the chair of this committee, you have a, if it was three.
Well, I had them both on my list, um, and, and I know they're both passionate about the, the topic. Um. So. I'm actually, I'm, I'm sitting right on the fence, I'm, I'm fine with either one of them. Um.
It's actually the three.
And then we go around and take a vote.
Oh, I thought, I thought, um, I thought Steelman and Dean were the ones with. Oh, and Crinick?
Crinick.
Oh, okay, um, okay, so I had all three of them on my list. Oh.
Maybe we should definitely voting.
I think that we were looking for two spots, right, an alternate, is that correct?
Right.
So there's one spot that's not.
Right.
And then a lot of two.
Well. So we could use all three of these people as well, it's one, it's which one will be initially part of the R O S and which two will be an alternate.
So maybe we should just go around and say.
And vote for one person.
One person, yeah, but certainly for two or.
Nice.
So our choices are. Crinick. And I'm sorry if I'm pronouncing it, um, Dean and Steelman. You wanna start? Um. Dean.
Dean.
Go ahead.
Steelman.
Clark?
Yo.
Steelman? Sadie, Steelman. Randy?
Dean.
Great, that's three, that's three. Not making this easy. Um. I think it was Dean.
Dean will be on, the, uh, Crinick and Steelman will be all.
Right. We don't have a date yet for the first meeting, um, uh, okay, so let's make this official, so, so we have, um, Clark. McKeon, correct me if I'm wrong, and Rebant. And then Bollmuth. And Dean. So those are our five members, um, David is the second P C member, and then Steelman and Crinick are, are alternates. Did I get that right?
Yes.
Yes.
So to be clear, the alternates would take the place of a regular member, a regular member that's not able to attend.
Yeah.
By numbers.
Okay.
And, and so they should attend all the meetings?
If, if possible, yeah, that, that would be, the thing is that they can attend the meetings if they're up to speed. Um.
With the, like, say, we need to choose one alternate, we go with whoever had the most votes first and then the second, like, to choose which out of the two that are alternates, who gets. An opportunity first, we probably should make that clear.
So Steelman would be our first alternate?
Yeah.
And then it would be our second alternate? Okay.
Persons.
Mm-hmm. Rain, was that a formal motion? I will make it a formal motion, maybe. Okay, um, I move that the following people. Become members of the um, President Outreach Subcommittee. I'm just going by last names, do we, do you want?
I'll put the first name of that.
Clark. McKeon. Rebant. Bollmuth. Dean. And then our first alternate would be Steelman, our se- second alternate would be Crinick.
And before you second that, Bollsler is the P C member.
David Bollsler will be the second P C member and I will be the chair.
Thank you.
Well, second motion.
Thank you.
Well, yes. Peltonan, yes. Robel.
Yes.
Bollsler?
Yes.
Merchant? Yes, Valnik?
Yes.
Um, Stratten, yes, and Deon.
Yes.
And thank you again to the eleven people who applied, um, we appreciate the, um. The timing, the time and effort that you put into your applications and, um, we hope that you'll consider. Uh, volunteering to, um, talk back to open houses and, um, continue to be good about these topics.
Thank you, Rain, for your work for that, appreciate that.
Can I just back up one second? And I very long, I have missed it on the milk. So this. Yeah, Peltonan. Did you hit, you know?
That was my.
Okay, thanks, yeah. I'm moving away, thank you very much.
Alright, now, um, so it is, R O S meetings, um. I don't know, we have to put it to a voter hat, but um, I feel this, it's a. We should leave uh, that up to me, I want you to get the people together and. But by when. Meetings occur, but for us to set them up every time, just have a meeting now, thank you, sorry. Everybody have another set of opinion on that?
I think that's a good, good approach, Keith.
Yeah, and.
That's something that we should.
The frequency of the meetings, um, once a month, two, twice a month, or?
Um, the job description stated once a month, um, but if for having a workshop or something, there might be, you know, the workshop in addition to a committee meeting. Definitely get it wrong.
Yeah, anybody, yeah. That's something that we have to vote on, or can we just, as a count?
You can get an R O S meeting schedule?
Cause we already approved the job description, which I think has a meeting.
Yeah, it has.
I don't think we need to do anything, okay, I don't.
She won't need to come to us for setting out dates or anything.
I would come to you if I need, if, if, if we, if I'm gonna request that we hire someone like to write the survey, um. And collect that information, you know, if any money, basically, I think for sure. Um, and then I'll be recording at, at every one of our meetings, um, what the R O S is doing and submitting data as we collect it.
Guess we're all clearing out though? Um, I did do a draft document, started, Rainy started it. Uh, just on R O S.
Can I interrupt just one second?
Yes.
Uh, Keith, could you move your mic to your mic, and Carl, could you move yours closer to you?
It's not coming over the speakers at all, when you're way back, when you're leaning back and your mic not far here, you can't hear.
I can hear this.
I can't hear you.
Is this better?
Can't hear Carl and can't hear Dave.
Is this better?
Um, can you pull your, pull your mic up and then listen to the difference even out here in the hall?
Is this better?
The airtime, yeah.
You have a very low voice, so you don't, you don't, you don't, I hear one word.
Sorry. We'll try to be better at that. Can you hear, right?
Only when you lean forward, if you're leaning back and your chin's out.
Just put it right up to you.
Yeah, pull up a bit.
Hold it, alright, okay.
That's better than.
No. Um, it's grand diagonal for the health of, uh, R O S, it's purpose, organization. Everybody, you can stick a little about. Just basically a guidance document. Something that you can use to.
I think we, so we, we've seen the majority of this previously, I think the. The main thing that you added was the meeting conduct, is that correct?
Yes. Rain, what's your thoughts?
Oh, I thought it was fine, um. I don't know if we need to put something in here about, because I didn't know that we weren't part of the Open Meetings Act until the supervisor told me that, so I don't know if we need to. Officially add something like that to this document.
Well.
Under the definition of what an R O S is, organization?
We could have that.
Yeah, that's probably good thought for it. It could be after that first sentence, you know, that it's in the end.
Um. Also. Why I depend from the supervisor. So when we start recording, that'd be.
It's not a part of the body, that's just. Cut off. It's not, it's not a requirement or. Um, what are you, or the basis to change that? It's an option, it's not required, a township just don't do it. All right. Thank you, Randy, for taking this on here. This is, yeah.
Be part of the, um, their support. You have it. Thanks, Danny. Also, there's a title of support should have, Keith.
All right. One recent taste award, that's. I didn't, I didn't follow with, um, the party. Uh, talked to Randy a little bit. About. Each time we have to deal with. Outside venues. My thought is, I think we should have one. Uh, ordinance. That talks about outside venues. Based on, uh. Based on the support by the Fire Department, EMS, police. You know, for safety. Starting, starting with safety and then moving on to. The local, locals that live there type of things. So I think that. As we started looking at, you know. Then farms and all this other stuff, anything that happens outside, even I believe the, you know. Gentleman that has the. The binary, I think, was talking about doing some outside venues, so. I think that that's. Shouldn't look, you know, with that, that we're not dealing with it every time it comes up. We'll be in the winery's tasting room, uh, possibly at outside venues also. I think that should be something that we work on, kind of together with that. Um, Randy, what's your opinion?
I was gonna ask, there is no separate ordinance now right now, cause I understand that. Uh, Fire Chief had some information about that, and I think he was gonna share that. I don't think I was looking for it, couldn't find it, did he? Share anything with you about. Fire code or standards for this?
Right, we'll look here. I, I thought I did, but. Two letters from the party.
Oh, so it's in the first silence?
I don't know, it's a little weird. Doesn't be. It is such sixteen, five or sixteen, six. With those letters, he's just explaining some of the things to the. What do you outside venues also? I just wanna bring that up, just to, it's just a first. I don't know if anybody's always hearing about that, so.
Comes out now because of the, the winery, and it's not unusual for wineries to want happy events, because they want to attract attention to. Their operations, of course, and so that's where the intersection between wineries and the outdoor. Events occur, so we need to address it, and of course. The vet barn survey that was done a few years ago, the active results of that survey, I. Kind of wish they had asked a couple of different questions, but they didn't, to have the information we had to work with. As far as what to do. Events in general and events specifically for these wineries. And again, you know, having. Birthday parties. Bachelorette parties, you know, different play, things that, and there's their destinations, and weddings themselves too, so.
But they would probably, would you give a bachelor, well, it's hard to say, cause he's, he's suggesting that this is. That the definition is, um. One of the tenets is it's a, it's a hundred people. Seems like a large number, doesn't it?
Well, and it's requirements for, uh, permitting and parking and notification.
Yeah.
And that's all this, you know, stuff that we would have to go over, but I believe that instead of dealing with it every time. You come up with somebody that wants to do an outside event, I think it'd be better if we just address it now.
As a separate order?
As a separate.
So with, uh, wineries, uh, would Sandy, would that fall under GAMS? Um, because once it falls under GAMS, then we. Uh, it kind of ends up in the right to farm. And then you have no, um. No jurisdiction locally. That's like if. I was just talking to an inspector, if they build a barn. Then he, he can't go in it unless they give up, unless they permit it. He, he does, he can't do any inspection. Uh, as a local construction code inspector. So. That's the distinction between special events and, um, um, tasting room or winery on a farm zone. Once, uh, they're two different things. So the winery tasting room permit, once it is granted by the state, they can. Do anything the state allows them to do, and we don't have any, um, input as far as I understand. Do you have any, I, can you correct me on my thoughts, or I'm not as familiar?
Just, I mean, GAMS is very tricky. Yeah, yeah, you're right, you lose certain jurisdiction, um. I guess. I don't know how to answer, I don't know the exact answer to that, cause it's, yeah. No, yeah, I. As far as, okay, so I guess my biggest concern with. I do, I do agree about like outdoor event and regulations and size and parking and all of that, and I tried to just address that. In here as best as I could, since we talked about last time. I guess my big concern is if you write an ordinance for that. And no matter what comes up in the future, like, do restaurants fall under that, that have outdoor seating or outdoor events? Like, is every single business gonna fall under that? And then how do you write one that is fair to every business? Because. Say, down the road, a smaller winery pops open. In like this little downtown district that we kind of wanted, that talked about that one, their event size. Is not, like, say we set it at a hundred and fifty people or something, like, well, a little tiny building. On the side street should not be able to have an event with a hundred people, because A, they're not gonna meet their fire code. So I feel like in long parking, but then on the other side, like, what if a big farm that owns. A hundred acre parcel, build the barn way out back, and opens a winery way out back on the back of their farm, and they can. Meet fire code to have that many people outside and that much parking, but you're gonna restrict them to only fifty to a hundred people, wherever you set it at. Like, that doesn't seem fair to them, nor is it fair to that smaller business. Who is going to have too many people there and the public, where the surrounding people are gonna be frustrated with that. So I feel like. Whoever, you know, obviously all this is gonna be special use permit to create any business like this. When you do a site plan review, isn't that when that should be considered about what your sizes and your regulations are?
I think what we're talking about is, is. Doing the safety side of it first. So what the Fire Chief says, you know, basically. You know, how many, you have to, I'm just gonna throw a couple of things out, like you had mentioned, so, you know, there's gotta be room for the fire. It's gotta be for everybody, it's gotta be, so that we hope they can get in and take care of the public if needed. Parkings gotta be off the streets, you know, there's just a lot of little things like that, that we can put in this ordinance. Um, and, you guys said, we're gonna have to do a lot of researching and figure this out as far as, um, GAMS, plant supplies. Or will work with this or not, or how it will work. But to have to deal with this every time this comes up, when we can deal with it once, based on a. You know, a public safety, and the. There's a lot of things that are limited. Um, outside venues, just by having, you know, a park, having. You know, stuff like that. I think that's. That's the avenue we should take is, well, this, first of all, for, for public safety. And then, of course, uh, or, you know, residents. And. Gotta start somewhere, and I need to, I have to do this every time.
So definitely, as hand, there is language in there that allows for the zoning administration grant temporary use of land for special events, but that's it. It doesn't say there's no standards, there's. So I, I guess. The problem and the issue, as I mentioned in the memo there, with wineries is that you're not constrained by. Typically, they're typically outdoor events, so, like, if you are having a winery event in this building, we know the capacity is sixty people. So we know how many people that they could have before they violate the fire code. If you're having events outside. You could have hundreds of people there and tents, and so then it's because. A moving target as, as to what we have, and parking on the, on the road. Happens, people sometimes from convenience standpoint, over. Side of the road, they don't want to park too far away, and then there's, so, so that's, that's the basic issue with. It's not only, um, wineries, but you've been bars or anything like that. Things indoor and outdoor, partially indoor, partially outdoor, whatever you got, you don't have the constraint on it, what you do with the building. We know in a commercial space, a retail space, partners are about three spaces for every dollar that they'll be. But when there's no building, then, then you don't know it.
Cause that is where GAMS comes into, if it's a farm. People can park wherever they want. On farm property, not on the road.
Right.
But.
But there's still, even with GAMS, there's still a little safety. So there still have to be certain requirements as far as making sure the fire department, if you don't respond. And those are the type of things I'm talking about, trying to get, whether it's like, so that. These are the things that have to be. You know, done if you're gonna have it outside, that, that. Whatever size it is, not necessarily putting a limit on it. But putting on. But, you know, we should plan approved by the Fire Chief. Just things like that. That alone, I think, it's here a lot of issues. So I guess my, what I would be guys is, uh, does that sound like. Something we wanna pursue, a one-time ordinance and, and outside venues? You wanna continue to deal with it every time it comes up in a, a use permit?
Okay, so, so maybe you already stated this, if, if we do create an ordinance. Or if we do create this as an ordinance, does that mean they don't have to apply for a special event, or do they, or a special permit, or do they still need to apply?
Still to apply, but they would have to.
So it's kind of just giving us a, a framework from which to begin, um, our review process, so the, okay. Then I would support.
I like that. I think that guideline is good.
Yeah, and, and this. Yeah, would it be prior to other ordinances, like the tasting room ordinance, you work on that first and then get that, then?
No, I think this is something, just where I'm going, I'll, I'll kind of, sort of have that a little bit. My question, then, maybe Randy is. But a good point, um, does this need to be an ordinance? Can this should be? A, um. Of this for us to view.
I've often seen it in the origins. But. I would, I'm not positive that it has to be, it couldn't be something in the, uh, Fire Chief's. I don't, we have to look at that, I'm not sure.
If it's not an ordinance, is there an enforcement problem if somebody doesn't want to go through that process?
Maybe so. Residential with. Globalistic is small. You know, that ought to be considered.
I'm sorry, Randy said something, but I didn't hear.
I said most time, I think I've seen it in an ordinance form or outdoor. And then also tied to special uses for wineries that might have some special considerations. Given its location next to. Arms or whatever, you know, bigger locations of it.
And, and would it apply to a, the special event permits? Uh, the event permits outdoor event, people have outdoor events. Would they have to follow the fire inspection code anyway? When they apply for the permit?
Right, I think it would, it would be maybe some size part or size, but.
Yeah.
And that way it would be just all the same, and that's one that we can work off from.
Hey, you're causing these sanitation issues.
Right. Okay, I'd like to go in, unless there's any more questions about that. Going to the. Ordinance. Yeah, for the wineries, I know there was a couple of questions, uh. Acre size. You had the ordinance.
Sixteen, it starts, I believe, at sixteen, and then.
Well, we go around the table, start with Denise.
Yes.
Concerns, questions?
Section A permit, section A permitted uses, it says, um, one B, the floor area of each building shall not be greater than two thousand feet. I would leave the word each out, of, of the floor area of the tasting room. Shall not be greater than two thousand feet was one of the discussion points that we had earlier. And then, um. The retail sales and food service are clearly accessory to production of wine. I don't see how anything can be manipulated to. Relate to wine, I, I mean, um, I could have a biker. Jacket with a bottle of wine on it, and that would be related to, so I don't understand. Um, how that would limit anything, I'm just, that's just me, but, um. Uh, the hosting of private wine responsive events every minute, I.
The one, the one time, so you're saying the. The D?
Um, I'm E, one B, A, one B, the floor area?
No, I got that.
Okay, and then D, I just don't know if it. Really pertains, because everything. Uh, you can, any retail. Well, first of all, if it doesn't sell, I don't think the business is gonna keep it on the lot, on the. In the, in the, uh, sales area that long.
Well, it, it does say clearly.
Yeah.
The, the problem that I see with that is that it's very subjective. I think the asserting needs to be, um. Modified in some way, and I'm not sure, I have a suggestion for that, but, I mean, because a biker jacket with a wine bottle on it is. Is definitely not part of the production, um, although it supports the company financially, I think that's what you're saying, right? Yeah, um, but I both. For me, that D is just too open to interpretation, which then puts the onus on debt. In terms of what makes it clearly accessory to production of wine, yeah, or whoever the zoning.
So A, one, E, oh, yeah, oh, yeah, I'm sorry.
All right, so what, what is the issue with that?
I'm just saying, it's so vague and open to interpretation, subjective, that it's. Kind of.
Give me a for instance.
Why do it, like, uh, like the biker jacket with a, a little wine label on it that they could sell, it's. Related to a winery or cidery, but, so, you know, you could take, uh, anything and put a little decal on it, and there you go.
Well, really, all they have to do is put their name on it.
But that's still an accessory.
Yeah.
To the business, and it says that it's an accessory.
Yeah, but I, that, what I'm saying is, does it matter if that, is, you can do anything, I don't think there's any limitation. And I'm not saying there should be.
I think the whole point of that is with the, for the MLCC, that's the statute that's saying that it's referencing in there. Is it's saying that you can't restrict the accessory items, so, does that make sense?
Yeah.
But it's already in that, if you need to have anything in here, I think, I think what Denise. I think, I think what Denise is questioning is whether we need.
Whether we need D and all.
If it's already covered by the MLCC statute.
I do like the fact that it's. It's been there, I guess, was something to think about, you know, it's not in there.
Okay, I mean, that's just my opinion, that's right. Yeah, and then E, the hosting of private winery sponsored events are permitted. In, on a farm, you can host. Private events. And um, I. I think you can have a public event and have tickets and then have. Your alcohol as part of the event, so.
You got your license.
You you can't have a public event with a ticket that has drinks included, so you're not really buying tickets.
If you're not licensed, no, you cannot do it.
Okay, so, all right, but you can't have a private event with alcohol without. Anybody can without any permit at the state from the liquor commission that's on their website.
Like a wedding. Like a family wedding, yeah. But the business can't have that.
No, but if you're having a private event, a- any private event can have alcohol because it's.
Correct, but not, if it's a, like, it depends on the private event, as long as you didn't sell a ticket to come to that event.
And then if it was a public event, then you would need the. Permit, you would need your tasting room permit.
I don't, I don't.
They were selling alcohol, they didn't have their license. Doesn't matter how they sell it, there's ticket or.
Yeah, well, you have private events, which anybody can do.
And winery sponsored events.
Yeah, yeah, if it was winery sponsored. But if you didn't have a winery tasting room permit, you can still have a private event. That's has alcohol.
Well, that would just be like.
Anybody.
A partner, like if I want to have a birthday party with my friends and family, yes.
Or have a um event that's private, that is people are invited to or someone. Else hosted at your location. If someone can, if I say, I want to have a um, a bachelorette party for a hundred and fifty women. Can I host it at your location and you say yes? Um, it can have alcohol.
It has to be absolutely not associated with a the, a business. If you wanted to like, hey, can we have this bachelorette party on your farm? Sure, but it has nothing to do with our business, like, if it has anything to do with the business, then absolutely not.
So can, it's, and and I'm just going through all the terminology because I'm and I'm asking you because I think you you would know more than. Others, your uh off-site sales permits, like if there's a manufacturer, they can have five remote locations. So could I? Uh, if I had a tasting room, never make any wine, but have five other manufacturers. Be permitted to sell wine at my location and I wouldn't have to make anything, I would just be a tasting room for those five. Manufacturers or however many you want. I I don't know.
It's based on the licenses, isn't it?
Yeah, it's a license that you hold.
Yeah, the the manufacturer uh uh or distillery can have five remote license. So if they say, I'm gonna give one, two, that's what, I I don't want to use business things for like a a place in. Uh, like a brewery in Traverse City and a might, and a winery in Toski and, you know, and one in uh Williamsburg. That's only three of the five, the people that are the recipients of that. Um, product, they don't have to have a. Permit. Uh, they have, as a tasting room, you'd have to have a permit, but she wouldn't have to have a manufacturer, it's you could just be. Someone that has a tasting room and you have all these products. Is, am I interpreting that offsite?
Thing, right, I. I haven't looked into the offsite things.
That's all license.
That's all license regulated. We can't regulate any of that anyways, so I don't know what the question.
Yeah, so, well, I'm just wondering if you can have uh events. And not even have to have a tasting room, you can just have events like um.
No, you have to have a license. If it's, if it's. No, you have to have a a license from the state of Michigan to have any company sponsored event.
Any public.
Public, private. If there's any money to be made. Then it has to be licensed, does that make sense? Like. A business isn't gonna host something unless they're gonna make money off that. And if there can't be any money made. Then, then no.
So what if you're having a wedding with a cash bar?
You're still selling.
So, so if you're having. If you're hosting, if a winery is hosting a a private wedding, but there's a, but there's a cash bar. Then they still have to have a license. I know, like, like if it's catered, the caterer has the license, right?
Okay, but you have to have a license.
Okay, so somebody.
A, they paid you for your venue probably, and B, yeah, you have to have a license, like if you had. You had a wedding in your backyard. And you decide to hire like those horrible bars, they have holds a license, but it's not. You're paying them, they're not paying you to come to your place. Does that make sense? Whereas it's a winery, they're paying you to be there. Whether they're renting your space, whether they're buying your other retail that you have there, so. A private or public event has to hold a license if it's out of business, because there's money being made.
That makes sense, and it's the business that has the license.
Yeah, it's a host, okay.
Is, that's, that's why I was wondering, there's the event barns that will probably have. Alcohol, let's say, for example, or something else. And, but it's private, there you're just renting the location. And then you bring all this.
And I don't know specifically how event barns work like that, but yeah, whoever own, I'm assuming is whoever owns the barn. Holds the insurance and they get paid that license, but whoever privately is renting it is privately hiring. The caterer and the bar and and there, yeah, so. I don't, that's a, like, event bar separate from a winery.
When you said the hosting of private. I, that's what threw me on on E. The hosting of private and winery sponsored events.
What you're saying is a private person coming in and and rent, hired them. Or if they're actually having their own, but.
Right, private or public. Yes, okay.
Is that correct?
And so the um, and so for, in the case of a private event. The winery is probably. Want to be the party that has the liquor license.
Yes, so like someone would say something like, I wanna. I wanna have my book club. Party there for them to be here. Then we are, that's a private event that we are hosting, they're paying to be there for.
Operating under the business.
Yeah, so you wouldn't, uh, if somebody's hosting a private event there, there's probably going to be using your.
You mean, you hope so, that's the point, yeah.
Right, I mean, but they're, but i- is it, I. There's nothing in here, I don't think, that is requiring them to use, you know, that seems like it's a business decision for the winery. And so what if they decide that they're gonna allow outside liquor and?
I don't think a wine, I don't think you can legally do that, that's winery. Doesn't seem like, well, it's foolish to not use your own.
Well, foolish is one thing, right, not making business sense, but is it re- a requirement, that's, I.
I think that it would have, from what I understand, it seems like it would have to be something that you are already licensed to sell. Or to hold and give to people, whether you're giving it out as a tasting or whether you're selling it, because they are renting your space. And you can't just have people with open booze in a bit, at a business. As, you know, so. As far as I understand, you have to, it has to be anything that's. Regulated like that would have to be what you you personally have a license for. I don't, I like, we wouldn't have a license to regulate somebody drinking a Bud Light, a winery wouldn't, on their property. So I think it's the same as that open in tax, you can't take a Bud Light into Myers, you know, it's, I think it's the same principle. Of what you're regulated to do, I don't see how you can do that, but. I don't, I don't know the answer for sure.
I just, I'm just wondering for leaving a loophole.
But you know, we can uh. Let me send it to the attorney with some of these are concerns.
Uh, I'm gonna. Like others, just cause.
I I have a question. Says the maximum building size is two thousand square feet.
That was what we. Last meeting we had was, that was open for discussion and that's what was said to put in there. So, again, we can alter it, but I thought.
Facing it then.
Was discussed, if anything was, that seems anything small to me.
It, well, it the, it's the, the the floor area for ta- the tasting room. It's not the whole operation, I mean, it doesn't say tasting, but. That's, that's what we were thinking, we were thinking of the tasting rooms we had been at locally. And uh, what, for maintaining the rural character of Whitewater Township, but our township. Wanted to.
Has changed, but don't, to each to taste.
Yeah, the, the serving area.
My question was, why would, why would you want a one of that? You know, it would, it would help, I mean, more people if they get a suitable. They can't fit everybody in there, then they're gonna want to take them outside. So, I mean, I'm just asking, what would be the?
Especially when we were just talking of people who are event, so in the winter, when you want people that want to be inside, expand that. You're gonna have less issues with conformity as far as safety rules.
I think the only reason we were talking about limiting it was, was the rural character issue, so. Um, if we're not concerned. Or if we don't think that this is gonna be an issue um, in terms of maintaining rural character, then maybe we don't need to. Restrict the floor area.
And in the wintertime, people have to uh, you know, during COVID, they came up with all sorts of ways to be outside, so they have the yurts. And all that, and people love that, and or an outside fire pit and, you know. It, it, there's no, there isn't the necessity to have a building per se anymore, that's permanent, people have. Uh, become very creative and it's up for the season and then they take it down and.
I, I agree with you, I think that it is important to be creative and I think that that's what sets the setting and why people like it so much. But from a business standpoint, it's way more expensive, it's way more upkeep and it's a huge headache. Versus if you could offer a little bit more indoor space from safety of rain and weather and all of that, because even an outdoor fire pit. Or an igloo only lasts for a certain degree temperature, so I do agree, like you. You should have all that because that's what makes it fun experience, but it also. A buildings, a a little bit bigger building is easier and more financially smart. But. You have to be creative too, with just how our weather is here in Michigan, so.
And and seasons of vibration, so, you know, peak of the summer and winter, there's. Not as many tourists or. It's, when the, you know, in the wintertime, you just don't need that, and in the summer, the outdoor. People want to be outside and experience the rural atmosphere and it's. You can decorate the inside of the building. Um, that to make it look like that or use air conditioning, but um, people just really prefer to be outdoors now. That's just, and that helps with maintaining the rural character. That's why that two thousand square feet, and we were kind of uh. And in um, a local cidery has um. That we've been at, it just seems to embody the rural character of, you know, that in their cidery, so we were kind of. Looking at the size of that uh footprint.
Do you feel like that's small, like too small?
I just, um, I mean, I think rural character can be this, be. And you have the architecture of your building. I don't know. Don't have this many square feet to do what you want to do with it.
I think if we look at other ordinances, they're usually defined in square footage. Uh, and every township chooses what they think fits best in their. Use of rural character. I, I don't know of any other business that is in our township that has ten thousand square feet other than maybe AIS or. You know, the plastics company or something, and that's not the look that people want in their. Um, maybe add or residential area. So wherever these, I think we're doing accurate, so uh. We just, it's just pertinent to our township and. You know, we can discuss this more, that could be. Something we put on a survey, I I didn't question, I don't know, but.
So I'm just curious, does that? Wouldn't this be dealt with? That'd be a special use, they would come forward and say, I want to build this tasting room or whatever.
That wouldn't be a special use permit, that would be in the ordinance.
I'm, I'm just wondering if, if we're, are we getting into municipal township's territory here, if if it would be scripting?
Yeah.
So when he looks at this, he'll tell you all.
We can leave it in there and he'll know right away.
Yeah, and it's just one of the things I'm concerned about.
You know, I'm gonna, I'm gonna support the. We have two extremes, sir, we have like. To point to the winery, where the belt crabs, they have a little fewer smaller building.
Speak right into that.
I think you have a couple of tables outside, that is strictly a tasting room where they're locally produced wine. There's no other regard, sir, than a, then you have uh, over a fence, a township, being some very large winery there, the tasting rooms and. And most large events, uh, the problem they had there is their mission. Try to micromanage everything, got themselves in a world of trouble, fifty million dollar, so right now, like. We need, this is a farm market. With some buildings that they can have events in, the judgment. With it, so I have a situation with, I think, uh, the event. Regulation and the wine, uh, which has to, of course, uh, uh, need a lot of. Regulations and the tasting room is, I think, is it just, you go inside and taste all in a row. Take it outside and a big event have private events, I have a real problem with that. That's more than a tasting room, that's, you know, something. Figure a nice bouquet would be, but we have to regulate it accordingly. So that we're, you know, why have, for example, why do we have? Would a farmer have to have fifty acres in farming, uh, what if somebody come along and they have producing wine, I don't know what it takes. To reduce traditional uh, wine and commercial quantities, uh, what if they have a fifty, twenty-five acres?
Well, that was something that we just discussed and agreed upon. To try to keep the rural character of our community. So like, we're not comfortable with the big acres that can be adjusted, but.
I think that's a number peninsula, it's fifty acres, and that's not a common number for a winery. I think the crux of the issue is what you hit on there, Carl, was is, you know, sometimes. You think about a winery, what's the difference between that and our restaurant? And and so, I mean, it's not, it's an experience, it's specialty, it's it's different, but. You know, in a sense, it's, it's the same thing, it's, it's a place to have alcohol and kind of food. But, you know, we're talking here, there's locally, right, right there. Whereas, you know, crabs, you go to the village market, they're named wine tasting. That's totally different, so. That's totally different, so. It needs to be separated.
One thing we're all in agreement that. So from the master plan, a lot of support for farmers. To keep their land and do things, and this is one of the things that. Help that, so. And I don't know if there's a way to set the bar theme, whatever. I don't know if there's a way to. Do. Keep that part of it out of it or not?
We might have the. The song. Regulation or so we're not. Uh, preventing somebody else from starting up. Some other thing. Or is there certain events? Yeah, I don't know. Regulates this and for our township.
I think. See, if you're wrong here, but I think it's it's hard for uh, farms to start something like that. So it's not like they can just. Throw hundred acres out there and do it and then have all the wine they ever would ever need for their tasting room. This is something that they have to start small with. And so they might have, you know, one line and you know, they might have to bring a few other wines in to help them start that business. I think that's what we're looking at here. We're looking at. Trying to start something. And giving them the opportunity and means to do that.
So uh, and we wanna maintain the rural character of the township and it's uh, to support our farms, but it's also. The rural character for all the other residents. So a ten thousand square foot building. To me doesn't say, wow, I'm I'm in a rural. I'm in a rural area. It's it's just too large for Whitewater Township, in my opinion, it's. Uh, and you can camouflage any building with trees and distance from the road and. Uh, the way, the the long driveway back, but you can. Uh, you know, it it's still. You know, ten thousand square feet to me is just really large and we're talking the tasting room. And I've gone to several and they're not large tasting rooms and they have events for like their. Members only and. It's it's fine. It's they. It's cra- you know, it's it's crowded, but there's room for everybody.
But I guess my thought, I wanna think about it is, what's the difference? Whether they put a ten thousand square foot barn up? Which they can do without asking. Or they put up a nice looking ten thousand foot? And I'm not saying ten thousand, but I'm just saying that mindset. You know, but they put up a nice looking, something that looks nice in this place.
Right, and we're also saying you can put a ten thousand square foot barn up, but you have to own fifty planted acres. Somebody can put up a ten thousand square foot barn and only own ten thousand acres. Because we're regulating how many acres you have to have planted, so that's. All relative to and keeping the rural character because. Whoever owns that ten thousand square foot winery also owns five or fifty thou- or fifty acres of planted. Like, not fifty acres of. Whatever they want to building, it has to be fifty acres of planted fruit. So. You're restricting them to keep that rural character by keeping, by holding them accountable for that.
Yeah, and we're also encouraging the use of existing buildings.
Right.
That's, yeah, that's um, I under- I I think that's all good, but. I I I don't know. I I just think ten thousand. Square feet is, I don't know of any barn that.
Well, I don't know. I mean, we can, I see, I understand the concern of you thinking that small is the side of the house and then you are really restricting them to people that can be inside the building. It's. Way less than what you think would be regulated by the fire code, so you would be in the middle, maybe five, eight? Thousand?
We're just talking about the tasting.
Yeah, probably established that already, the two thousand is that.
I did too, but yeah, I feel like the most concern is. Small.
Well, I'm sure was that said, said building.
It's just the tasting room, right?
We change the wording to uh, tasting room, that would that be? And then um, take out the, yeah, the floor area of the tasting room. That shall not be, okay. Yeah. Do you wanna go section by section or instead of going through the whole thing, everybody going? Through the whole thing with.
Well, I I think let's 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 go section by section and everybody can kinda. Bring something up there and then.
Yeah.
Alright. I think we read. Was of. The. The peninsula's issues of setting.
Sixteen.
Hours of operation. Did I hear about that? That couple will just mention, well, uh. Have an area concern for your town.
Um, but that that only pertains to. Doesn't it? Yeah.
That's what their issue was up there.
Was events, okay.
King, where are you at? What section now?
But you see anything else to another concern about?
Um, and just an F, can we limit? Four calendar days in a thirty day periods? I mean, I I don't know based upon the lawsuit the that was. Decided. Yes. Yeah, right, yeah. Yeah. The hours of operation is uh, number four to ten P M. At night, is that our? Yeah, is that our local?
It's based on the noise ordinance, isn't it?
I don't know if it's nine or ten.
No, it's. I'm sorry, someone's saying.
No time on the noise ordinance.
Yeah, there's no, I didn't see a time.
Okay.
So quiet.
See if that's.
Yeah. Okay. And article nine. You know which um, category the parking would fall under in Iowa, Ohio? Hard four point oh. Um, what for the schedule of Austin Street Parking Reform is nine point oh seven.
This would be for.
This is for A one only, right, the ordinance, yeah.
Would it fall under uh, restaurants, taverns and bars, one space for each three persons allowed? For maximum.
So when we talked last time, we talked about. Putting this in here. And if you scroll down on page eighteen, it shows where we split it in under nine point oh seven.
So also we have that. I wrote that in the mail. Completely, that was in the packet for the meeting.
I think it's, isn't it included in here?
Yeah, it's in, yeah.
It's on, it's on page nineteen.
That's on page nineteen.
Your memo, your memo, your memo's on page.
I found some other parking standards that some of my planning researches.
Your memo's on page one. Yeah.
Yours is eighteen minus this.
On page twenty is the parking article nine.
Yeah, so there's some, I think. Maybe better parking standards that are specifically for a winery. County of Virginia.
So you said, you said the proposed standard of one space for every four people um, associated with maximum occupancy should be discussed more. What are your thoughts?
So. If you scroll down past that on survey stuff.
In his memo. Page twenty. Section. Yeah, article nine.
Age fifty seven.
Oh, in the fire.
Parking standards.
Two thousand.
A little bit dated, but it's.
I was gonna say that truck looks like it's from nineteen eighty.
So. Uh, and and I'm just, just an example, two thousand square feet would be. Twenty, one space, one hundred square feet, so help me with math.
Space per hundred square. If we're doing two thousand square feet?
Yeah, that's.
I don't know how many people can be in a two thousand square feet.
Oh, that would go back to uh. The um, letter that we had from Josh Morgan.
And with the tasting room, that's a little bit more dense as far as number of people in there, so. I think that's. It's the reason for the high number of spaces.
Yeah. Well.
Because you could have a tasting room on the way out and still have the retail shop in there and a.
Yeah.
Whenever, there's a lot of different people. The building is still be. Relatively close to each other, have our.
They would probably have to have different parking areas. Unless the retail was closed. At during, at the the time of the event. Uh, because it's some venues they have. Two weddings a day. Noon, you book noon to five and six to ten. Um. So the, you know, if your retail space is open during the four or five, you could have, you'd have to have parking separate for the event. Um. I I I'm just saying that I don't know what anybody has in terms of their plans for a tasting room. But my concept would would be that you have a set parking area and then. With the intention as your business grows or you have a huge event, you have designated parking that you can expand. And and have available that, so that um. You know, that that's what they normally do at large events.
Another question is too, do you really wanna pay all of that?
No.
You know, so.
I'm sorry, didn't, I thought this was a question.
Oh, well, no, I guess I mean you. I've seen places where overflow parking is paid somewhere.
Right.
You have. You know, it detracts from rural character and it's a great stormwater issues.
So do we wanna make a number or are you, is that something we need to look at?
Well, that was, because it's, wineries are unique use, so. Lighter. Connect that to something else doesn't make sense and that's a less, I just went to that research there that. Seemed to be around the same, one space for hundreds of feet, so, or a two thousand square foot. Building up to two hundred spaces. That's a good sized park.
Twenty.
Two hundred.
Two hundred per. For two thousand, is divided by a um. Knockoff two zeros off of. It does, that's twenty spaces.
Yeah.
That's two hundred. It's okay, so maybe that the first mistake. So one space for every four, we we need to adjust that on. Building size, they're saying. So I'm based on occupancy? Are you basing it, see, once that's.
It says a maximum anticipated.
Yes.
So right now we based on. How all these other ones are. On article nine, how they're all um. Great.
We do it based on capacity?
So that's um, that's part of what uh, was mentioned by Randy earlier. If if part of your uh, venue is indoors or. Ready seeing, basing the parking on that and then if you have the outside seating in here, which could accommodate more people, then you have to accommodate more. And that's where um. That overflow parking or um. Excess parking, however you want to put it. Needs to be figured out and and that to me can be um. The business owner's responsibility because you know if you have an event and it's gonna, you normally have. Forty people and you know, you're gonna have an event, you know, there's gonna be two hundred. The business owner should have um, additional parking outlined in their site plan review. That uh, would accommodate the additional needed parking, but in your traditional permanent parking area. Where the building. Capacity, you know, you just have that on your. Your permanent parking area. I that's, that's my.
Right, so under, if you go to the page eighteen, where we. Put it under residential use, wineries and cideries. How do we need to modify that then for the?
We've modified the parking standard. Chapter. To add a category. I think if you look at the, well, today, the average people in a car. Is one and a half.
Yeah.
We'll encourage, right, Sharon, if people are drinking.
Well, definitely, but I'm saying if you're looking at trying to plan on. You know, the average of how many people are gonna be there. The others are gonna be. Well, it's unlikely we won't get a winery alone. Right.
So article nine. Article nine for restaurants, taverns, bars and that, we've got one space for each three people allowed within the maximum occupancy and.
Yes. Um. So on either page eighteen at the top, where you're talking about your off-street parking in your ordinance. Uh, you have one space for every four persons of anticipated capacity.
Because that's where, yeah. When we were here last and we talked about this parking, we looked at article nine, yeah, and we were looking at. Which we could compare it to, we said we got the foot, you know, wineries and cideries as their own use.
So we can amend that. I mean, we can amend that with a new category.
Right, like. Like here, this is the insert for it. The use is what would be wineries and cideries and then the number of. People would be right here. Unless we think this needs to be modified.
Yeah, did you, did you write it as maximum anticipated capacity or square footage? You you did capacity?
It's on page eighteen, yes, it's capacity, it says capacity.
Oh, I I meant in your. You're the, I thought you were talking about the chart. Um, okay, so. One for every four, but what about the the capacity of the building itself? That should be a.
One for every four person of maximum anticipated capacity.
Yeah, okay, so.
The tasting room or the entire building?
Yeah. As well, as a term by the uniform, single state building code, so it'd be by what you're allowed in that building.
Yeah.
So the entire building. So if the tasting room was part of like the manufacturing. So if the tasting room was part of, like, the manufacturing building, then it's gonna be for that.
I think it would have to entitle that building, because what if you have workers in the back, right? So it would be the maximum building.
Um, just a point of order, we have about fifteen minutes to continue talking about this.
So, uh, we could go as far as we can for fifteen minutes, so I, the question, I, I guess my point is, is. You have, um. Maximum anticipated capacity, but there should be, um, a regular capacity parking lot. That, for the size of the building. Um, and then the anticipated capacity, if you have an event.
Well, that would be other events.
Other events, okay.
So from a practical standpoint, if Deb just handed a set of plans for a winery, and she has to determine. How many parking spaces are required. I don't know that she would go to a building code to find that number of documents, she is. Typically, if she would go to looking at the size and building and square feet.
So it would be, it's a hard and fast rule, we don't have to put it in our.
Maybe, maybe that. Use.
I would go to our off-street parking ordinance.
The chapter and say.
That we have one.
Right, rather than a separate building code.
Yeah, that's, that's, that was, that's the point I'm trying to make, is, is. You should have one, to me, it should be one space for every four persons of maximum capacity. Of the building, and then. Additional parking, uh, determined by the, um, anticipated. Um, a capacity needed for an event, that they should have one, like, like, I'll just say, a, a hard and fast thirty parking lots. And then if they have an event for two hundred, if they know they're gonna need, the business knows they're gonna need more parking, they should have an anticipated additional parking lot designated in their site plan. That, but I, I'm thinking that there should be. One hard and fast, not in, uh, cause. If I go by anticipated capacity, and I, I know when I start, my business only have five people a day. I only need one parking space. That, that's, that's, I'm just trying to.
I think for, for, for building codes or for, depends on how many people can be in. It's how many parking spots you have, not how many people think you're in.
Which, it's, it's the zoning ordinance that's gonna require.
So, so do you want to remove the word anticipate?
Most of all, yes. All the standards here are per square foot of building size.
Yeah. So let's, let's just remove the word anticipated, that's all I, that's all I.
Okay, they got anticipated.
And, and because that's what's gonna be the schedule, and in the site, um.
Do we want to call out the uniform single state building code?
No.
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 Pretend that. May I ask them?
We could just say as determined by the zone.
Fire department will give an occupancy number and they'll post it on the wall, similar to this one right back here that says six zero. And that is based on square footage of the building.
Okay, as determined.
That's two things, though.
Yeah.
Then it, which could be different.
Yeah, say that again.
That's two things that could be different, by the chief's occupancy number, and if you have. Or all, all the other parking standards are by square foot of the. Building.
Oh, that's why.
Like retail centers, four spaces per thousand square feet of net. That's, that's the ordinance, that's what Jeff will go get the plans, they'll meet that, so.
Every plan that comes before you guys actually has to go before the, the fire department too. So just like brand driver's classics is growing. That building has to be approved by the fire chief, he's looking at fire suppression, parking, getting trucks in and around the building, he has his own application, his own criteria. And fees for that, so you could just generally say must need fire. Fire code for the, like, our contract fire chief, he's essential, because he's got his own set of standards that he's using, and his may change at any given time.
And that's for the occupancy.
Occupancy, fire suppression.
But number of parking spaces, we need.
You have a whole section of.
Yeah.
Winning ordinance for parking space, so if you want to amend that, that's all. Yeah, so do you guys.
Same.
Yeah, that's it.
Yeah, that, because what's measurable, what's the measurable, measurable? What the fire chief says or what the ordinance says? And the ordinance.
I think it would be like whatever is more, right, because ultimately those fire chiefs is gonna trump.
More restrictive, whatever it's gonna be.
Because you're not following fire code, then.
Fire chief is saying occupancy is such and such a number, right?
Right.
Barely sixty.
Right.
Okay, the ordinance is saying, how many spaces per, per occupant?
How many square, square foot, yeah. That's, that, I would take out the square foot, because.
You do it by, by occupancy.
Yeah.
I'm sorry.
Yeah.
I know, I know the rest of the parking ordinance is written by square footage, but in, with this type of usage, it seems like it should be by occupancy.
Okay, can we talk with the fire chief about that specifically, the world, so that, I'm not sure, I mean.
Yeah.
I see, I see the uniqueness of a winery, and any other wild card in this is buses.
Right.
You know, where party buses. Or as Walter Brys called them, Bryzella buses.
Yeah.
Should there be specific, um. Spaces for buses?
I, I feel like that's up to the winery, if they're not gonna make it, if they're not gonna make an area for, for. Parking buses, then that's their choice, that means bus parking, if, you know, buses won't be able to park there, they'll just drop off and they'll have to leave and come back or something. I don't think so, that's my opinion, I don't think.
Yeah, and then you get into the size of, of buses and.
And, and then under, just had a sentence saying, um. Any event with anticipated, uh, capa, greater anticipated capacity than the parking lot, additional parking will be. Designated, so there's no, you know, there, so that's all off-street, that's.
I think it already states that, that all the parking has to be off-street.
Well, in the schedule of off-street parking, but, um. I. I, I like people to plan for success and, um. You know, and, and not be overwhelmed by some, and, you know, not, not anticipating they don't have a plan in place. That, that's just. That's just, we don't.
I didn't see it anywhere, so I mean, we're interested, whether they have a different parking plan.
Wouldn't they be part of their site plan?
Yes.
Okay, so we can just put it in there, okay.
I mean, we, we. We've got Article nine in here with off-street parking, but I'm not seeing where it specifically says that. Like, do we need to add something under events that all parking must be off-street?
It says that under events that it has to follow. The standards outlined in Article. Cover.
Okay.
Which is off-site, off-street, so you know, I believe.
I'm not sure Article nine says.
It says, are we off-street? No, it's section nine over regulations. Well, it's the schedule of off-street.
Section nine oh seven.
Yeah, but it says residential.
That's.
But it goes on business commercial, we just.
Yeah, and, and so what category will we place the den?
Residential.
No.
Business, this is a commercial, yeah, because right now I put it, yeah, okay, let me change that, because. It does say under residential, but we could put under business. And commercial.
So section nine oh eight says, uh, a off-street loading spaces, oh, that's loading, uh, sorry. Uh, the scope of the regulations, nine dot, yeah, that'll one. The spaces jumping provided in all zoning districts according to requirements of the articles, and that is it. Correct.
What are we looking to cover?
The anticipated capacity, uh, uh.
Partly we have to enter that.
Okay, well, we said we're gonna add that in.
It would be in the part, it would be in the second point of view, right?
And then, if it's in there.
We just want to make sure that, that is, so we'll add it, we can add it to where in the table on nine oh seven. Can add it to the table, how you, how we said. The capacity, the building capacity, and then. Event.
Event parking.
We can add that under there, and then under the standards for wineries in the ordinance, it says. Parking shall be provided per Article nine, so then. The events have to follow Article nine for parking.
Yeah, that's what I meant, where, where is that, if we have an event? Um, and, and so, in, in, I, the uses, yeah. I just scheduled nine to schedule off-street parking, you said it would be a commercial, business and commercial, and that would be, um. That would have the regular parking space per square foot or capacity, but then when you have an anticipated, in, in that.
Right, they add that in there.
You put that in there, uh, in, in the same section.
Yes, in that case, okay.
Yeah, Randy, that's, well, already has a mix of square footage and occupancy.
My, my question is, why the chief confirms the occupancy, just off a set of plans or after, and finished out inside.
Um.
So that, that's what I'm, I'm putting out is. Is when the occupancy number is determined.
Right.
Well, I thought.
No, because you talked, you know what is in there, and it's, it's like, I don't.
Right.
You should check that.
Yeah, and then we, it's after, because he came after our building and then told us our number.
Which would, which would mean we're not gonna know in time for the site plan review.
Right, so you can't determine, that's why I apply all of the, lots of per feet.
Yeah, except for, uh, you know, like, um. I'm just, I'm seeing a mix, like restaurants is based on occupancy, um. Same thing with, you know, beauty shops, a lot of laundromats, I mean, so we've got a mix in the table, yeah.
Just clarify that with the chief, I think, before we.
Because wouldn't, I mean, the, wouldn't the, the, whoever's. Wouldn't the owner want to know what the occupancy is gonna be, I mean, because it would affect their. Their business.
Side that.
Right. Yeah.
Don't permit to be live for.
Right.
Danny, can you work on that, so, you can obviously see, we need, we're visual, I'm a visual learner, I need to just see it right there, and, 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 I'll talk to the.
Laundromats is based on, on washing machines.
It all makes sense.
Yeah, we've got a whole.
And the reason, you know, just in general, people, um, of the community are always concerned about. Noise, parking, traffic. And so it's, it's important that we've covered these things in more detail than other aspects of it. I'm, I'm not, I'm just saying, I don't, I'm not trying to be real. You know, nitpicky here, it's, parking's important.
What else?
Do you have anything?
No, I think my, since we're addressed, we talked about the event memo from fire chief.
Yeah.
So, you've already addressed that.
Yeah. And, and I'm thinking that fifty acre farm prop, that came up in the lawsuit, Peninsula Township. Um, only that, um, I, and I would like some. Clarification or on appeal, they're appealing it, whether that will hold, because, um. You know, if, if it, and the Peninsula Township, did you read that? That, there was a, a portion of it where it said that they could only have. If they needed excess grapes, they had to get it from other farms on the peninsula, and the judge said, no, that's restricting their business and.
There's the commerce, the competition.
Yeah, and.
But, but.
I, I.
The ironic thing is that, that.
That would support other farms.
By wineries themselves years ago, when they found that.
Yeah.
To accomplish other objectives, and so.
Yeah.
I want it. That's a waste for talent.
Yeah, and, and, and I don't know if anything is familiar with Temecula, wine, wine country, they got the whole road, and they got the big arch over it, and you go down the road. You have the, the, I call it, the winery storefronts, but there's a lot of supporting farms on the other side of the hills that just throw grapes to, to put in all of those wineries, but. The grapes just come from all of that region and, or that wrong. And why he would, you know, the judge ruled against taking it from other, and they had to take other farms on the peninsula, which. You know.
So I did make a comment about the fifty acres, though, and that is placing the winery on. The fifty acres as opposed to the, uh, one or two acres side here, and then.
Yeah.
Somewhere else, because it's gone. That was the, I think it was just the language.
I think the reason we said. Is because we talked about farms that are very broken up by parcels, like, just for an example. Amuses or, uh, Dean, even us. Uh, Rennies, they all own three hundred plus acres, but. There's very few that are all together, so.
Do we want a minimum, though?
I think the way you put it, I, I like, it's fifty acres of product. Well, they're, they're fifty acres that is, right, that product. And I don't, I'm gonna say, take them away from the building, it's so, that product, so, well, it's with.
It just says planted eight.
Yeah, and, and I think that's. My, my interpretation of what Randy is saying is that if they want the tasting room on a fifty acre minimum parcel, not, uh, a two acre parcel.
Or contiguous.
Yeah.
When it could be, then that were a fifty acre parcel, that can be, if we, fifty acres of contiguouses. Adjoining parcel lines or.
But a fifty acre section owned by five persons or.
Yeah, if that's the intent here, I guess, I think, I thought that's what we wanted, but if you think.
Um.
Or maybe they're not very small or.
Again, that may have been in the lawsuit, I'm not sure, because.
I think the issue was the, it was a constitutional issue, so it was challenged, and the lawsuit of that. That saying, well, you can get your grace, wineries, um, here if they come.
But that bit about, uh, the size of the, I, the size of the. Parcel that the winery is located on the tasting room, it's not.
I don't.
There's. Yeah.
So, so these parcels are, are there, are there sort of like a, a minimum farmable parcel? Or plantable parcel?
No.
A, a rule of thumb, I, I mean, I'm just wondering if we're gonna get back to what Carol was talking about, which is where. They take a house and turn it into a wine tasting room, um, and maybe, you know, everything, all the plantable acreage is elsewhere, so do we want to have a minimum? Um. Parcel size for where the actual tasting room is?
Yeah. It's.
I like that ring you said, as far as like. It's gotta be next to the fifty acres or other side.
Across the street, so we just gotta define it clearly and.
But again, even if it's across the street, it could be a very, you know, it could be a residential sized piece of property that's gonna suddenly have a. A tasting room on it, which of course is gonna have its own limitations based on like parking, you know, availability. Um, and events based, but, um.
If, if the number is less than fifty, that's, I'm fine, but I guess I just wanna make sure we're clear on. How big a parcel, how much land you have to have, and how much has to be planted. In material, but, not in material, it can be.
There's three issues, there are the tasting room. There's something in English, you have your production.
Right.
Facility, which, I will take the more, most of the tasting room. Part of it, and then you have where you're growing your grapes.
Yeah.
That's. You're right, I think, in there, uh. Says typical layers, but they don't all have to be. In the same spot, they could be, you have two or three different bone thirty, wild zone area, uh, and. I think down there doesn't say they all have to be, you know, our kind of grapes.
Right, it just says.
Other crop, you could be, you're growing, or you're. You're talking, I don't know, you also pick up corn and soybeans and things, but it's. So there's a little, you know, you kind of look at that and kind of, you're. You know, it's, it's, it's sort of reasonable, perhaps, either, I don't know.
Well, let's take that and think about that and see.
Well, let's take that and think about that and see what we can come up with together. Uh, perhaps move on. Uh, but I think that's a, um.
And part of it is covered in the definition or at the very beginning.
I don't really care, other than with five hundred sales.
That's tackled.
Okay, um, you have any last questions? I think we just need to nail down the fifty acre thing.
Okay, I mean, I guess. The issue with the fifty acre thing. I don't, I guess I don't understand what we're, what.
The location of the tasting room.
So that you don't have a one acre winery and then. The last, rest of all. The grace coming from adjacent counties or somewhere else.
Well, you have to, it says that they have to own fifty acres within our township. They can have a one acre winery, but they have to have fifty acres of planted. Farm in our township.
Yeah, and, and, and do we want the, the tasting room on the fifty acres, at least one fifty acre parcel, you can have four hundred acres, but. The one, the tasting room has to be on at least fifty.
I think that's, I think that's pretty restrictive. I mean, what if you own, you have a prime spot on a prime road. But your, all your other acreage are way in the back country. You want to put one on. A way back road and increase traffic and flow when you already have a main spot on a main road that can handle the flow of traffic and. You're getting into all of that. You know, like. What do you consider to, to be that restrictive with somebody?
You are, but you do say in the, in, um, in the additional, um, conditions of special uses, that the fifty acres may also extend. For the regions of Grand Travers County, which.
Where is it, where is that, sorry?
It's signed, um, eighteen at the bottom, right, thirteen special uses, so. So I don't think it's saying what you, what you just said anyways.
Yeah. Yeah, we added the Grand Travers County. It's a little tricky, because what if you own. You know, where Big Throne is, you could have a huge amount of acreage there, a majority of yours is just over the line. I'll see how that's fair to restrict those.
No, I don't, I don't have an issue with it, I don't, I don't think it, I, I, based on what your previous comment was, I don't think that's what this is saying.
Okay, so you know.
Separate parcels. Um, it doesn't say anything, like what we could say, none of it, it doesn't say anything about. How it's broken up or whether they touch each other or anything like that, and then. It says that they can extend into further regions of Grand Travers, as long as partial ownership is in Whitewater Township.
Right, and I didn't. That left, probably, it's up for debate, you know, do we wanna say a certain percentage of it is a Whitewater Township? Or like, I don't know, or am I just take that out? Is it all be Whitewater Township? I mean, these are things like. I don't know, we had to, I mean, think about this to figure out our reasonable.
Right.
Can we say that it's? They have their fifty acres within our township for us. You know, fifty acres on another township, we can be looking at that township.
I agree too, yeah, let's take that out. They could have two wineries. Let's take that, take that, that just complicates things, so we'll take that out. The Grand Travers township, and then we'll look at. Making that more clear.
Uh, again, I mean, it's a great clarity, and it's making it easy for them to be able to see where it is complies. This time is the most important. Live with this for decades.
For sure, yeah. And that, that's the important part, but to, that can review it and, and look at what she needs to be enforceable.
Yeah, I talked to them too about how that can be more clear, how she thinks. Okay. Yeah, sure.
I have a question, looking for your input. For the purposes of this discussion and the minutes, uh, are there specific summary statements you would like me to put? For this portion of maybe pre discussion.
Other things are getting more bad for this, or?
Yeah, well, a, a, a summary, specific bullet points or topics. Cause it was a long discussion, I, I just want to hit major points, and I'm looking for your input onto what you might want them to be.
I haven't written down what we're gonna work on.
I think, um. I think it's all gonna be in the next document that we provide.
Right, but for the purposes of these minutes, to.
Yeah, bullet, oh, I think he's, okay, he's got all the things that, looking at, so. Section one B. We're gonna edit.
Can you send her out the mail?
You want me to send it to you or just tell you? All right.
I just, I'm just looking for some succinct summaries since.
Yeah, I can send you the edits, the bullet pointed edits, so.
Thank you.
Okay. And then that will be addressed at the next meeting?
Yeah.
Yes. Is that what you're saying?
Continued.
Thank you.
All right, uh, moving on. You already exposed the possibility of the museum for outside venues. I'll work on something to bring to us to look at next, next month. But just.
Well, I'm gonna put our tables next month. To be continued. Okay.
Yes, the next meeting, uh, is August third, if I'm correct?
No, no. That's a special meeting.
And that's at six P M, as I understand that.
Do public hearings?
Do the public hearings during that. Three and fours are critical. All right, any last?
Yeah, I'm, I'm interested in pursuing, uh, uh, the road ordinance, um, private road ordinance. Uh, before the state legislation, uh, that's ongoing, it looks like there is a bill, I haven't. To be honest, checked in two months, but it rightly, uh, indicated that it would probably pass that they would. Have the minimum acreage, uh. Uh, parcel size for agriculture, to be one acre statewide, and if they do that, then that means. You know, all the farms, it will be. Um, not all the farms, but they will take into consideration. And even in our township, that they will, um, maybe subdivide. And having, I, I, I think, do we need a road ordinance, a private road ordinance from the subdivision?
You do, and I, we, I spoke, and then I spoke with Jennifer. Yeah. Maybe this is, I don't know, this, this gotta go into the R O S, or this one's a little tiny commission, I think. But I, obviously, there are versions that were done before, there was some appeal, they actually had a couple copies of it. So, I know that you can ask Louis Fraser to give us a, direct. Very, very, very basic private road ordinance, so that he can get something adopted and concerned. I've said before that we are vulnerable to. Lots of things without adding a private road ordinance, and, and, for years, so. Jennifer was actually, we were in a communal meeting to go, she worked that one for Paradise Township, which is a fairly. Small rural township, simply want basic requirements. Taking into account was not before, that trying to ignore what was done before this. Good things that everybody knows, but there is a good part of that, that is basic engineering. Road geometry, materials, I'm just talking about. And, um, I sense fully for sure that.
It'd be nice to have a starting point.
Yeah, something very, very. Being that being super complicated. Even the basic protection. That which you were looking for most.
Yes. I'm looking for help.
So I guess.
And, and it's, I mean, if, if Denise. Um, would like the help of the R O S, she can.
Yes.
Yeah, uh. We need a starting point, and then maybe it, it might be.
Just let us know.
Those other applicants might be interested in the private road ordinance.
We're gonna work it down.
I'm up there.
Carol, anything else?
Um, I just wanna address all the public comments earlier, just, um. I wanna, like. Rachel, I understand everything that you're saying, and I respect that, and I, I feel for a lot of people that are struggling with the S T Rs. And how long this process is taking, but, um, I do wanna say, just like. From my personal standpoint, I'm doing everything I can that I have time for to get all of these things going, and I know that. The winery thing, it seems to be taking, it. Steps are being taken for that, but at the same time, like, there's so many other things to work on. And when I joined the board, it hasn't been very long, so a lot of us are very new, we walked into like the whole disaster with A I S, and that consumed the first several meetings. Um, in order to move on with other things, we've had, you know, one meeting was canceled, cause we didn't. So then we got nothing accomplished that meeting, one meeting went too long, so we didn't accomplish anything on the end of the, the agenda. So it's, it's overwhelming with the things that need to be worked on, and. I feel like we're doing our best and trying to make things happen. And I'm gonna continue to do that, to try to make things happen and not table everything for the next meeting, like we need to make decisions, we need to be proactive. Um, the S T R thing, I feel like we were working on the R O S committee, and we have a plan, and we're really gonna. Try to move forward, cause I agree that it needs to be addressed, and it needs to be worked on, and it probably shouldn't have been started two years ago, but. Three years ago, I, no, none of us have any, most of us have no. Control over that, the fact that it's been taking so long and that it's been overlooked, um. I have read the master plan, there's a lot in the master plan that needs to be addressed, and I think that if you grant us grace, we're working on that. Uh. The master plan does talk about agrotourism and the importance of that, and there was nothing being done with that for several years in our township, so I feel like. Just like S T Rs, just like private roads, agrotourism, all of that. We're behind the ball on all those things, so I just want it to be out there that. Doing everything that I can, I know everybody else is trying to work harder by the R O S committees to. Continue to move forward and make decisions and not stall everything out, unfortunately. The S T R is just gonna, now that we know, we're gonna have to have a bigger meeting place, a bigger agenda for that, and to try to adjust. To try to meet everybody's needs, so I hear you, I hear everybody's comments, but I also. Like you gotta grant us a li- a little bit of grace, some of us are new, getting our bearings, starting to figure out, but I am trying my best, and. I continue to push things forward and push things through as best we can, so. I, it just needs to be said, like. How things used to be done, how things should be done, or all, I mean, not, not always join this board and not do our best, and not really work for everybody in the community, so. We'll keep working on it, we'll push it through as best I can, and. And while you know, I hear, I hear everybody's concerns, both good and bad, and taking it all in, but I feel like our. Um, establishment of our R O S committee shows that, like, we know that we have more than what we can handle, and so we need help, and we find. It's finally happening, so unfortunately, it took us a while to get that formed, it got pushed back several months, unless you inform the committee because of different delays, so hopefully, we can. Keep moving forward.
Just point, I remember we had our three hours, uh. Still have to give Randy a public comment, and so, I'd make a motion to proceed.
Yes.
Can I make a motion that we proceed to finish up, uh, the comment? All in favor, say aye. Two things, first of all, thank you for all your work on the one hundred stuff that you have to do along pretty quickly and, and, and. Secondly, just want to give you this, one thing you said though, and that is that there was a disaster with A I S.
Not, I'm sorry, I definitely missed, not a disaster, just like, it took a lot of effort in figuring out.
That's a fine point on this thing here, but the, the conditions that A I S. Uh, excepted, had to come from them in writing. And that was in the material that you guys saw from the M D C that describes how conditional zoning works. You can't, as a planning commission, as I understand it, you cannot. Talk to an applicant and say, these are the conditions that we will accept. They have to, they have to voluntarily offer that, because they're offering a restriction on their property use. So it took a couple of meetings to get that through, and they had the learning involved in, in that conversation, so it's not like. They were unaware of the process and how that had worked. So I just wanna make that clear, um, it was, it was, I think. About a disaster.
Yeah, I shouldn't use that word, I mean disaster, I just meant time consuming, that, I keep coming back to it, and time consuming, that. Consumed a lot of our time, it was, yeah, for sure.
All right, so, is there anything else, Randy?
Rachel, some people met Chris from home, so. I just wanted to address what you just said, C D and that's that. For the last couple of three years, I also threw all of these things, there was so much that needed to change priority, and you've heard that lots of them identify what those varieties should be. So that's the point I'm trying to make, is that. We wanted to work on stairs, I did three years ago, I wanted to work on a lot of different things, and people called me constantly begging for their thing to be priority. And I always came back to the fact that first we need to recodify, I mean, to understand what we do have, and we need to decide what does the whole town, the whole township want. And that's what we did, and so, um, I appreciate, I guess, where it gets a lot of work, I know. Um, I like being on the site better. Okay, so the R O S application process was intended to reflect diverse perspectives on short term outs. And it lies in needing an extension in the selection process due to a lack of opposition as there has occurred. Today, appointed four league front property lawyers, three residing in steps of each other in Oakley. It's all coming up here is to favor one viewpoint, especially compared to page nine today's meeting. There's a clear document pattern of selective decision making and a robust public trust. I will attend every R O S meeting possible to run through prepared unbiased research and recommendations.
Honey, bomb in day three eighty-eight, winning lane, private citizen. I need some definition here, ladies and gentlemen. And you might have to refer to the. Authorities and responsibilities of the Michigan Township, that would be the red look, I need you to read chapters five and six. And then compare it to your bylaws. Cause if we're supposed to be following the M T A, we're members of the M T A, you're all going to their training and, and, and everything. You can't pick and choose which rule you follow out of this book.
I'm sorry, can I ask you a question? So are you saying that our bylaws don't follow those rules?
Okay, let me finish my time, you can't talk to me, I'm sorry. Uh, what I'm referring to is. Meetings. In this book. Advisory committees, subcommittees, be careful, there's court cases. Uh, if you go to your bylaws, you have subcommittees. Executive subcommittees, ad hoc committees, a subcommittee operation, ad hoc membership. Uh, I need a definition of what you guys really. Did today as far as what kind of committee it is, because some you have to follow Leo and May's. Uh, subcommittee members, including residents, may be paid according to the salary wage schedule, uh. Okay, we didn't, we didn't have any discussion about number nine in your bylaws, uh. Well, we did it, we elected not to be paid. Uh, not P C members, and subcommittees must complete payroll paperwork with the clerk before payments are processed, o- okay. Um. You got capital linking information here, and if it's just an advisory committee. You would need certain things. So, um. Help me out here, uh, you might wanna, some of these to reexamine and figure out what you really created here. Cause it will be really hard to follow your rules if you've created two different things and followed one. Thank you for your time. Maybe I hate to do the very values, but people still can't get soon, they're getting kicked out, then bounced dead, and then eat that out, I don't know. Yeah, well, I. I don't know what's going on. I wish I didn't have my phone number on the website for three years. Because then my phone wouldn't blow up either, but I also need you guys to tune up for me. Uh, this is a new book, might wanna read the ethics. That's just a fine line here, um. And I'm only gonna say I came to this conclusion because there was a very unhappy citizen yelling at me, I guess I'll call her a friend now. Um. Very upset, because she felt that, wow, you get to sit on a planning mission and you get to submit your own organs. Perception is. The arts, public relations. Um, I don't know what to tell you there, but if you read this, this book and the green book on ethics. You really shouldn't be doing this, because how are you breaking a tie? And that's all I'm gonna say. Because she shouldn't be here, because now she really can't vote. But if you have a three-three tie. She's supposed to come in and guess what, break the tie, but you just eliminated that. This is why you gotta read the books, i- if you expect us to do our own work and give you. I mean, I would hate to think that you wouldn't research something that gave you.
For anybody else?
First of all, I appreciate all of your service, I can't imagine the time that it takes for you to all. Hit on the important issues that are um, on your desk, so. I, I know much stuff that I do to look into the things that are important to me, and you have all of it on your plate, so I appreciate you. I do encourage and caution all members to stay neutral to the issues before you. You can have a personal opinion. But you must stay open to what's best for the residents and the township, I think that's real important. From a couple of things that I heard um, today that didn't really go that way. Um, also. Again, I'm willing to help troubleshoot Zoom. I know there's a lot of issues for the people who, um, today are very frustrated, I don't want Zoom to go away. I wanted to say for the people who are home taking care of family members. Who um, can't come here because of physical limitations, I think it's important. That we leave that um, avenue open to those residents. Um, also, these microphones are so tricky. So if you turn your head away like this, you hear how it's on the speaker? So when you're not speaking into the microphone, that's what happens to us back here. When you turn your head like this, it's like you're sitting at your dining room table, talking to people who are guests in your home. You can all hear each other, but we hear nothing, so I know it's a real pain. To have to lean forward and speak into the mic, but it's really important. To come across on Zoom and for the people sitting here. So I appreciate all of you again, thank you for your time, for your service with me, and I appreciate you. Anyone have, have anything to say?
Can I talk to you?
Thank you.
Okay, I guess I'm it. Ran out of people. Um, a lot of what I wanna bring up is things you've heard, and maybe just elaborate a little bit more. Um, the first thing is, um, I appreciate the time you guys have put in. I've been there, I've done that, I know it can be tricky. Um, and I know you can have the best of intentions and something can blow up in your face. And it's not because you did anything wrong, it's just because by the time I made two laps around the township and got back to you guys. Uh, or one lap around the attorney, um, that'll do it too. I wanna give you a heads up and a little. Advice from someone who's done it before, you're looking at a winery ordinance. We know you can't eliminate events from winery. So if you're doing winery, you're doing events, if you're doing events, you're doing event barns, as Carl pointed out. You're not just doing outdoor events, because you shouldn't be discriminating against indoor versus outdoor, you're doing events. Period, indoor and outdoor, additionally, you can't do alcoholic events only. Because then you're setting up a situation where only. Wineries are allowed to have an event bar. That's also not okay. So. By taking on wineries, you're taking on events, event barns blew up pretty bad, so just be aware. That that is another hot tub button issue, we did not have the advantage of the survey that you guys do have on record. But, um, given the respect it deserves, it can become. Another short-term rental period. Um, additionally. I wanna elaborate a little bit on what how you said on the resident outreach subcommittee. You do have a legal problem currently in the way you're approaching this. You have a residence outreach subcommittee. A subcommittee is subject to the Open Meetings Act. So it may just be a terminology, terminology issue, but. You need to switch it out, because your description of the job. Is subject to the Open Meetings Act, your name is subject to the Open Meetings Act. If you're going to pull some of those responsibilities out, you can maneuver it to make it. If you limit the scope, you could make it not subject to the Open Meetings Act, what are you trying to do? Um, because the way it's set up right now, y- you're, you're not. Um, it, it doesn't pass the smell test, you're gonna have legal problems with it. Um, and as much as it pains me, I have to agree with Heidi, I, I was getting why Zoom? I know people were on Zoom, people were also being chucked off soon, or it was cutting out, or it was freezing up. You're still having Zoom problems, so when I went on it and said, okay, what's the problem? That's exactly what happened to me, so be aware, it's still not fully functioning, thank you. And we don't wanna lose this.
I have one more time. When I was reading the ordinance. Somewhere I found you can't have booze in rack. Now, where I found it, I can't re-find it, but somewhere I read it, because I even read it out loud to someone. You can't have rack. Can have booze in recreation, and there's only recreation, you cannot have alcohol. And I read it somewhere, and I read it out loud to someone, but I closed the book, so I can't remember what I saw, so now I gotta re-read it too.
For anybody else? Good. Okay, thank you, everybody for coming. Move for a German.
Before you do that, on the continuing ad, I'm assuming that that is the.
Yes, it's just.
M T A online learning.
Last month.
This is from Wendy through. Let's continue again, please, okay, thank you.
Make a motion to move for a meeting.
I did it here first.
Oh, okay, first and second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
I'll be kind.